7:00 PM. Forum of the Planning Board being present. Call this meeting to order. Before we get too far, some of you may or may not know one of our members had to resign, Mr. Ryder. So we'll take a moment to thank Mr. Ryder for his time on the board and his work with the board. His expertise was certainly a bonus and a benefit to us and on behalf of the town. So we'd like to thank him for his time on the board. Sorry that, you know, scheduling and, you know, priorities, you know, the right things had to come first and that makes complete sense to all of us. So we'll deal with what that means for the board as far as while that vacancy is there and the process for taking care of that and our voting and whatnot. We'll discuss in a few minutes how that, you know, does it doesn't affect us. But did want to take a moment just to thank Mr. Ryder for his time here and all his work with the town. All right, so with that, we're gonna skip Agenda Item A because we do not have the minutes for tonight. We'll deal with that at our August meeting. Moving on to Agenda Item B. B1 Committee Reports. Do any of the members have any committee reports they wish to make at this time?
I'll start, Mr. Chairman, on my end.
All right, very good. All right, moving on to Agenda Item B2, Town Planner's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just something quick from me tonight, so just a couple of project updates that we have coming through as of late. 836-846 Main Street, the Berundi Italian Foods who are gonna be moving into the old Maribellas. The building plans are under review with the Fire Department and the Building Department, and once approved, the new owner will be able to move forward with new construction, and they're aiming for a fall opening. They do plan to demolish the house that's right next door to the old Maribellas and turn that into a parking lot. They'll have to come to the board for a site plan review to be able to do that. They're hoping to get about 20 parking spaces. Next, 1325 Main Street, the old Discount Madness. I visited the site on July 8th and noted that the owners have begun moving the boulders to the front of the property, and the fencing is still up. I have not heard any further updates from the owner or his representatives to date. And 1800 Main Street, this, oh, excuse me, this is supposed to be 1880. Site Plan Review was released on July 12th, that's for Treehouse, and they have submitted their construction plans to the Fire Department and the Building Department for review. And once that is approved, they'll be able to move forward with their permitting for the construction of the addition for the cooler. Item number two, just a quick plug here, the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant Program through the state was awarded to the town $193,000 to conduct investigations into flooding in town and possible solutions. The project ran from September 21 through June 22, and the project's final findings and report are on the town website under the Community Development Department page if anyone is interested. Mr. Duffy joined us for one of our public education events, which was great. And another item is I attached the most up-to-date list of outstanding as-built and bonds as of July 11th. Approximately 65% of these projects are still active, so most of them we won't be looking to clean out for quite a while, but if any of you have any questions about anything on that list, feel free to let me know. And last item, as Mr. Johnson mentioned, there is a vacancy on the board. While there is an open seat, this is still considered a five-member board, and that means that any special permit which requires, still requires a supermajority and will need a unanimous vote of the members who are currently present until such a time where that vacancy is filled. Likewise, if the board is ever down to three members present, no special permits may be granted, only simple majority votes may be taken, so site plan review, you know, bond releases, things like that, anything administrative. And going forward, until the vacancy is filled, applicants should understand that proceeding with any application while the board is short a member results in needing a unanimous vote. If any applicant has questions or concerns, they are welcome to reach out to me. That's it.
Chairman, comments? Mr. Fattalia?
Yes. Ms. Lauter, I had a couple of concerns, and one was the 836-846 Main Street regarding the way it looks presently. I know there's some construction being done there, but if they can tidy up the Main Street look of it, it's just, it's on our Main Street, and that goes as well as the Donuts Doughnuts site. They came in last month, I think it was, for an extension.
Oh, you mean 2122 Main Street?
Yeah.
Okay, yep.
And that again is getting overgrown.
Sure.
As well as the site across the street, 2131, I think it is. So, I mean, just driving around town, I hate to see some of these sites. One of the sites we're gonna be discussing tonight, I believe, so I'll wait for that, but just seeing some of the sites in town that aren't being kept up and they're on our Main Street, so.
Sure, and just one more thing, 2131 Main Street, as of about 4:30 this afternoon, I signed off on their building permits, so site work should be commencing there shortly, and that will hopefully look a little bit cleaner soon.
Hopefully they can get it cleaned up in the meantime.
Right.
It looks like an eyesore. That's all, thank you.
All right, so to continue the topic, Agenda Item B3.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I'd just like to make a quick comment on the Planner's Report here, and, you know, relative to the board on 1325 Main Street. I just wanted to comment on the way that that mitigation kind of went down at the meeting that day. I think it was our last meeting or the meeting before. And I think in the future, what I would like to see is an applicant submit a plan for our approval as opposed to, you know, kind of surveying us to see what we want. Do we want the fence up? Do we want the fence down? Do we want the rock pile moved? Do we want the holes filled in? I think when we're talking about, like as Vinnie mentioned, some of these parcels that are, you know, the development is delayed or abandoned, I think it's more, it should be on the applicant to come to us with a plan rather, because later on, they could say, "Oh, well, you know, the board didn't tell me to plant grass," or "The board didn't tell me to put a fence up," or whatever, whatever. And I think maybe we should kind of have a discussion at some point about how to mitigate the lots that are sitting for an extended period of time. Okay? And then one more quick comment, I would like to make a comment about the MVP Grant Program. That was an awesome presentation. I think that the benefit to the town, you know, to look at flood resiliency is something that, it's way under the radar, that nobody thinks about until all of a sudden their street is flooded, and I think, I'd like to thank you and Weston and Samson and the rest of your group there that worked on that project. It was a great project, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so moving on to Agenda Item B3, Board Vacancy. So picking up on the same topic here. So in order for the vacancy to be filled, or at least the most expeditions way to do so, is for us to vote to seek to have someone appointed to fill that vacancy. Again, I'll say it without being absolute about it, but my understanding of the process would be that if someone were to fill the vacancy, it would be till the end of this term, meaning till the election, at which point that person would then, or anyone else, would run to fill the remainder of Mr. Ryder's term, which I think would be two years at that point. So it's kind of a broken-up process. More of that will come out, but that's just kind of the idea. And then, connected to that issue, Mr. Ryder did ask if the board would be amenable to allowing him to continue to serve on the Elementary School Building Committee, which he's been on as a representative of the board basically since its beginning. We can take them as separate issues, I'll just say that at this point, that process is in more of a winding-down period, and, you know, I think it would take longer for a board member to get up to speed than it would be to have Mr. Ryder still on there and continuing. The only difference being that in order to do that, we relinquished the board seat in order to allow him to serve as a citizen member. You know, obviously on these kind of things, we like having a board member where it's at the end of the process, and I believe we did something similar with a board member in the past with the High School Building Committee that kind of served out their, ended their term on there even after they'd left the board. So my recommendation would be we do that, because I think it would be in the best interest of the School Building Committee and everybody involved. So, but we can do that in a second. I'd like to take the first part first, which is the making a motion to fill the vacancy that Mr. Ryder has left on the board.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, any other, any comments on it that any of the board members want to make?
No. Mr. Chairman, I've reached out to a couple of people, previous members who would rather not step in for six or seven months, and one of them was just recovering from an operation, so that those two people opt out. But I really feel that it'd be imperative that we get someone that has some experience, not come in here fresh, and I'll tell you why. Mr. Duffy, even though he's doing a good job, is only been here, what, four months? Someone came in today for Mr. Ryder, be his first day. I'm leaving in seven months after 40 years, so that means you would have three people less than a year on the board of five. So it would be very difficult, so that's why I suggest that we try and get someone to step in for Mr. Ryder's spot that has some experience, and if they want to stay after that, they can. They can run for reelection. But that's my feeling on that.
Okay. All right, anyone else? All right, then we have a motion from Mr. Duffy to move to fill the vacancy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, it all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, motion carries unanimously. All right, and then as to the allowing Mr. Ryder to continue to serve on the Elementary School Building Committee, are there any comments from any of the board members?
Yeah, I echo what you said, Mr. Chair. It would seem rather ridiculous to put someone in for a few months in a committee that's been involved going on for almost two years. So I would ask, I was asked the board to recommend that Mr. Ryder complete the task that he was given, and we move on. And then after this, we'll thank him for that, and that spot can be used for something else.
All right?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just make a motion to, that we do the same, make a motion to continue Mr. Ryder's presence on the board for the School Rebuilding Committee, and like you said, it's almost being, it's almost over. I was there the other day for a tour, it's coming along great. Expected date of vacancy is, I think, January, so it's not that far away, so I'm making a motion that we keep Mr. Ryder on as a member of the committee.
All right, so just for clarifying, what we actually have to do is we have to vote to relinquish the seat as a Board, as a Planning Board seat that would allow Mr. Ryder to stay. So that's what we'll make the motion, if that's all right.
Sure.
Just amended to move to vacate the Planning Board seat on the School Building Committee.
I'll check in then.
All right, motion made in second, it all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item B4, Retail Marijuana Discussion. Mr. Sadwick here.
Good evening. I believe Alex distributed the memo that I had sent to the selectmen back at the end of June, and I'm just here to kind of talk through or answer any questions the board may have on this. I think everyone's aware that when we last left off with the zoning bylaw, we had put cultivation, manufacturing, testing and research in the Industrial 1, Industrial 2, office research, and West Side Neighborhood Business Districts, and that we left the zoning, we left medical marijuana treatment centers in the General Business Districts. So in looking at this, there were like three different types of models that I had come across from different communities, a license-only type model, a zoning-only model, and then one that was combined with licensing and zoning. And looking at this, and after, you know, witnessing what other communities have experienced, it just seemed to make sense to go with a licensing type and not necessarily rely on a zoning special permit, because the licensing would bring those operators back before the Board of Selectmen annually. So that was where my recommendation landed, and then I also recommended to try and geographically spread out where these would be allowed, so the General Business District, which pretty much runs from Muffler, I'm trying to think, down by the old Nissan dealership, up towards Stadium Plaza, the Industrial 2 District, which encompasses the Lumber Lane Industrial Ave area, and then South Village Business District, because there was really nothing on the south side of town, and there's kind of a market that's not being met with Wilmington and Redding, and so that was kind of where those thoughts came up. So there'd be three different types of articles that would be prepared, the general bylaw, which would implement the licensing piece, some minor modifications to the zoning bylaw, and then passing what would be a 3% sales tax on the retail sale of marijuana. So that was my recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. I'm here to discuss it with the Planning Board if you have questions on it. And if this needs significant further discussion, we could probably, within the next week or two, kind of hammer out those things, set up a special meeting, because the warrant closes on, most likely is gonna be August 19th, so.
Okay. All right, we'll start, Mr. Duffy, any questions, comments?
Sure. Steve, I just would like a little clarification, if I could, on your recommendation for the one point, you said 1.5 sales tax, and then you just mentioned 3%, and I noticed on the, in the zoning, it calls for up to 3% revenue sharing. Is that a different thing, or?
Yeah, so the sales tax is something that we would have to implement through town meeting vote. That revenue sharing is something that would come out of the host community agreement, and that's, again, the state governs a lot of that through the Cannabis Control Commission, so as of right now, that's something that we can negotiate for, the 3% shared revenue, but the state can always change that.
And then I just had one other, or a couple of questions, actually. So I was looking at the, you know, obviously some of the requirements, you know, for a dispensary to control the odors for the material in the vicinity. I mean, are they, is that technology out there that's, they're able to kind of ventilate as needed and still control the odor, or is that something of a potential issue?
There is some technology out there for that. You know, we've struggled in the past here with other types of odor-producing facilities, but there are certain things that can be done.
Okay, and I think that there is a control that the hours of operation are not to exceed 8:00 PM, and I would think that the ventilation in the hours of operation, like the hours of operation would be kind of an important piece. Do we have any idea what we're thinking, you know, what timeframe for open and close, or?
Yeah, I think that's gonna be more with the licensing that the selectmen will do. You know, the other thing too, just to think about this from the odor perspective, from a retail sales perspective, my understanding is, is that everything is sealed, so there's not going to be, it's not like a cultivation or manufacturing site where you would have some type of odor emanating from there. Everything is wrapped up and sold, to my understanding.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Fattalia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Sadwick, just a couple of questions. The town meeting will determine the sales question, correct?
The sales tax?
No, the sales, the relative question about sales, selling marijuana on-site?
Correct.
Right, okay. So now, most towns, according to my review, has, there's not many problems with marijuana sales, and, you know, it's pretty well under control. That was a big question years ago in town about whether there was gonna be a lot of issues with drugs and crime and all that stuff, but I haven't seen it, but, so is that a correct assumption as well?
Correct, and, not to speak for the police chief, but the police chief has done his research and contacting colleagues in other communities that do have the dispensaries, and he says that they find it to be one of the best regulated or performing retail operations because these licenses mean so much to the operation, so.
Absolutely. So just for the public's clarification, the three zones would be the district from Main Street at the Lumber, not Lumber, look at that, is the Midas dealership to the Lower Line.
Correct.
Correct, so that's all of Main Street down by Stadium Plaza and so forth, correct? And the other one, I know where Lumber Lane is, but that's an East Street address, correct?
Correct.
So from East Street to the line as well?
No, that's along the railroad tracks, so it's kind of the railroad tracks, Carter Street, there's, you'd kind of make a rectangle out of that area. That's where the Industrial 2 is. In addition, and just for further clarification, Industrial 2 also happens to be back in the Washington Street, Court Street area. The likelihood of something occurring back there doesn't seem to make sense, because it's so out of the way.
And just for the last district, you said the Village District down South Tewksbury, from where to the line, or?
From Shoshine Street to the Wilmington line.
Okay, yeah, that's all, I just wanted to get that clarification out and so the public was aware of that, so, great, I'm all set.
Mr. Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I thank Mr. Fattalia for asking my questions. We always manage to do that. My only question remaining is on the chart number two, zoning only, select board for the host community, which is obvious, site plan review, the Planning Board, then you have a special permit, select or planning board. Who is going to make that decision as to who the special permit granting authority would be?
Well, right, so of those, of those three different options there, I'm recommending option one, so.
Okay.
The choice of whether it be the select board or the planning board doesn't pertain to what I'm recommending, I'm just showing that that was an option that was looked at.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
So just, but just to touch on that, so the first bullet point you have is that most communities use the Model 3, though.
Correct.
But you're recommending Model 1.
Yeah.
When you say most, I mean, is it a big disparity, or?
It's probably a little bit over 50%.
Use the third.
Use the third, yeah.
And I, do you know why?
You know, in trying to think through that reasoning, I think a lot of people were looking at when it first started up for belt and suspenders. I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessary, but I also don't see the harm in it either. As long as it, I mean, as long as it rests with one board that has, and that's why in my mind, I think it makes a little more sense for it to be the selectmen, because they're gonna be there for the licensing, and the last thing we want to do is have the license and the special permits not marry up, so. It could be one or three, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I think two's out.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, it doesn't sound like really anybody uses that, and I can't see what the sense of not having a license would be, that seems to be completely defeating of oversight, so. I mean, I don't necessarily have any issue, I sort of look at this along the same lines as the billboards. You know, rarely do I want to give up our board dealing with site issues, because that's what we do. But because this has those, you know, the community agreements, and there's a lot more sort of things involved here that make more sense to house them in one place, plus the ongoingness of it, because it's gonna be, you know, licenses checked, ongoing and all that, you know, I don't have an issue with, you know, Version 1. It doesn't sound like anybody else he does either, so that's fine. I mean, we still have a role in it, it's, you know, it's just, you know, you're trying to keep a little bit more one-stop shopping. So, you know, from that perspective, you know, and it also has such a huge financial component involved in it, that it sort of makes sense to leave it with the Board of Selectmen to, sorry, the select board to deal with, you know, as an ongoing thing. So the only question I did have on the sections where it would be allowed would be, would the idea be to limit it to, say, like, one in each, or something like that? That way, you know, it doesn't all end up in one place, just as a way, because, I mean, the idea being to spread it out might also be the idea of not over-saturating any one area. I mean, you got three.
Yeah.
Do we have an idea of how many we'd be willing to license to? Because I know we, you know, we have a limit on liquor stores, but I mean, you know, I don't know how this works.
We can limit, we can limit the number to 20% of packaged stores, so we would be at like two or three.
So, I mean, maybe there might be some sense in thinking about keeping it, you know, no more, more than one to each zone, or whatever?
Yeah.
District?
I can figure out how to work that into it.
It just feels like it might be, you know, share the benefit, share the burden kind of thing around.
The only, the only, the last thing that I just wanted to point out is that there has been inquiries to other districts, one being the Town Center District, which, you know, from a planning perspective, just doesn't seem to fit with what we're trying to do with the Town Center. The other one was something closer to East and Shoshine Street, which I can appreciate that you would want to get as close to 93 as possible. To try and make that happen, though, would be really challenging, so.
What about 133?
Yeah.
Perfectly right on the town, there shouldn't be names.
Yeah.
All right, that's just me, I'm just being a wanker.
And that, that could be a little, that could be a little challenging, too, but...
I'm sure they'd appreciate it, much as we do, all their looking out for us. That's fine, okay, that's it.
We got one more question, if you want.
Mr. Fattalia?
Yeah, just one last question, Mr. Sadwick. So you mentioned inquiries, how many have we had in town?
Alex has been fielding most of them, but I had two for the Town Center and one for East and Shoshine, but, and I don't think Alex is, oh, and we've also had one for the South Village Business District, but I don't think we've had a lot of people asking about, I'm sorry, one more, one in the General Business District, two, so really.
Two in the General?
Two in the General Business District. So, you know, with what's being proposed here, we're pretty much hitting the places that we've received inquiries on.
Sure, so about six?
Yeah.
Five or six, yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Curious?
The only one that we've really said no to was Town Center, it just didn't make sense. The, and like I said, East and Shoshine is just challenging to try and locate it in that location, because you have, you have the heavy industrial district there, and then you have the multifamily, so it's hard to really hone in on that.
Sure, sure, all set.
All right, thank you. So, do you need a, do you need a recommendation from us?
No, I think we'll just, the article will be either be submitted by the selectmen or the town manager, so as long as, as long as we have the Planning Board's blessing, I guess, that we're all kind of in agreement, that this seems like this is gonna work and there's not gonna be any...
I know Mr. Fowler and I sat on the zoning bylaw subcommittee, and, you know, we would have liked to have seen it included, but we understood why, to keep the two pieces together, so I know we were already sort of fine with moving forward with this. Mr. Duffy and Mr. Fattalia, you're good with this?
Yes.
All right.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item B5, 120 Lumber Lane Compliance Extension Request. Once you guys get settled, we just state your names for the record, the floor will be yours.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Paul Ross, I represent 120 Lumber Lane LLC. With me...
Joe Phelan, 120 Lumber Lane.
Six U. Building Design, 73, I'm a board.
All right, gentlemen, the floor is yours.
Good evening, we're here to request an extension of a compliance date that's within a prior special permit that you granted for 120 Lumber Lane, and you do have some material for you that I submitted. What we want to try to do here is, we're working on full compliance at the property. This is regarding interior tenant fit-outs that were done by individual tenants, and some of them don't comply with the building code. uh, that, and some of them don't comply with the building code. So that usually somebody added an office or something like that, it's inside their contractor bay. So there's been quite a bit of work done to date, but there's still quite a bit more to do. We tried to, uh, present you with a package tonight to kind of give you an idea of where we're at. I think that, uh, the task was underestimated in terms of what has to be really done in each unit initially. So, uh, to do a, a compliance inspection on structural work, you have to really be able to move around the unit, figure out what's going on. You also have to analyze the prior building permits to see what units are in compliance and are not. Uh, so I tried to give you a table to show kind of where we're at right now. Uh, and, and you'll see on that table, uh, the yellow is, uh, units that we believe are in compliance. The green are ones that, uh, we are about ready to submit building permits for, so they had to have some type of, uh, building work, construction work done to bring them into compliance. And, uh, then there was a couple on here that are white, those are next on the list. Uh, there are other, uh, two, two other buildings with a few more units in them. Those will be also tackled, uh, once we get these done. Uh, so we're here for you to ask for an extension, uh, to April 1st, uh, 2023, uh, for meeting the compliance regulations in, in that special permit.
All right. Anything to add?
I have.
Okay. Mr. Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I can understand, being one of the three people that are still here, that gave you, gave Mr. Uh, Joe, I'm going to call him Joe, because that's his name, nice guy. And I'll tell you a little story about that. But who gave him the extension, uh, a couple of years ago, for a, a youth that needed his expertise and his ability to get the job done. Along came COVID. As you know, what happened to a lot of people, a lot of businesses, and he has been able to pull as much of this together as he possibly can. I'll still get to my story. Why, um, I would suggest that this board issue the extension so that he can, um, finish the project of which he's worked very diligent and hard on, and because of his need to do this and to supplement his time for what he has lost. My story. Quite a few years ago, I didn't know Joe. I was doing some inspections, planning board inspections, checking sites out. We were down at Kerry Plaza. This gentleman walks in, he's got this red and silver coat on, and I thought he was pretty sharp. And you, you remember that, Joe?
Sure.
Yeah. And they were in the process of re-aligning the areas in the, where, um, the Italian restaurant is now and Dunkin' Donuts and all this. So I told him what we needed, and what we needed was for him to spend a lot of money to move some telephone poles out on East Street, uh, Eastern Shashin, most of them on Shashin, so that the trucks and cars could make the turn coming out of that site. I walked out with him, showed him, he said, I'll get it done. As I said, takes a lot of money to move telephone poles with all the products that are on it. He moved five of them. He paid their five that moved, so that we could get the turn, the exit, the widening to the benefit of, for the entire town, whoever goes down there. From that time on, I considered him a gentleman and true to his word. So that's why I would support this wholeheartedly.
All right. Mr. Fattalia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I reviewed the application and I do recall back in the day, discussions about, uh, by Mr. Um, Plunkett, I believe, right? Back in the day about the challenges facing, uh, Joe and, and his project down there and not really knowing what was inside for a number of months and years as people occupied the, the premises. But, um, I'm also very supportive of extending the request. You know, my only question, Mr. Ross, is you think that's enough time? I mean, you're only asking for like nine months or so, right? So.
Correct. I mean. We, we will see, I'm not sure it'll be enough time, but, uh, I think that it's a reasonable amount of time to ask for now. Uh, we will most likely be back before you in the springtime anyway, on a, an extension of the overall permit, I believe. I could double check the timing on that, but.
Yeah, okay.
We are, if you looked at the table, there are five units that are ready for building permits. We have a substantial number that are already in compliance once we get those three, those five in. Um, and then most of the other buildings have fewer units in them anyway. So I think we have a good jump on it right now, and we also have multiple architects and engineers and a local contractor that are all on board with weekly meetings to.
Yeah, I've been reading the notes and, uh, you guys have been working at it pretty good, which is great, you know? And, you know, I'm very happy to see you've been working with the Tewksbury Building Inspector and, and the Community Development Office, and, uh, that's what we want, you know? Rather than have to chase people to get things done, it's a proactive thing by you and Mr. Phelan as well to get, to get the project going and be, uh, in compliance. So, uh, so with that, I, I'd, I'd, no problem, we, uh, continuing the extension and even more time if we decide to go down that road. So, but, uh, all set, Mr. Chair? Thank you.
Mr. Duffy?
Uh, yes, Mr. Ross, I noticed there was a couple of different dates, probably just a typo in the letters, there was a March 1st and an April 1st, so I, I assume you want the April 1st date?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Sorry about that time.
Uh, and I was going to ask the very same question that Mr. Fattalia asked, is that enough time? Uh, we appreciate you guys moving forward with your, with your, uh, fit ups down there. You know, get those fit ups done. I see you've got a contractor on board in your notes and, um, and, uh, you know, that, that can be challenging in and of itself. Anybody who's tried to get a, you know, a window put in their house or, or get a bathroom renovated is, uh, having the same problem trying to get a good contractor, right? So, um, I would say that, um, yes, um, I would, um, I would want to make a motion to approve the extension to April 1st, 2023, and, um, you know, continue to expedite those fit ups and get those businesses back up and running down there. That's, thank you very much, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Duffy. Yeah, I'll, I'll say the same thing as Mr. Fattalia, you know, more often than not, we get extension requests, but with very little information going along with them. Here we have, you know, schedules of what, what's gotten done, what needs to get done, the, and showing the effort that it is getting done. Don't mind getting extensions in those cases, obviously, because work's being done, something is happening. Um, it's the folks who come back after, you know, a year or two and say, yeah, we need more time. And then that's the extent of the argument that sort of gets our attention. So, um, I am a little concerned that you picked April 1st as your date, but that's, you know, to you, I guess. But I'm fine with that otherwise, so if, uh.
We need to get these places, we have to empty them to re, to renovate them, no end, no revenue coming in. So we need to get these done quickly anyways, so that we can start renting it out. There's a need out there, there's a lot of small contractors that need to have a home, a lot of them are Tewksbury contractors, they want to keep their business in Tewksbury, they don't want to take it to another community, so. But now we get a good contractor on board and, um, getting a lot of help from the, uh, different departments in town.
Good.
Good.
Good. All right, so with that, I will entertain a motion to grant the extension that's requested. We'll move. All right, so I have a motion to extend the, uh, extend to April 1st, 2023. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Good.
Moving on to agenda item C, 1879 Main Street, Site Plan Review. Do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
So move.
Motion made, do I have a second? Motion to, do I have a? Waive the public reading.
Oh, sure.
Do I still have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Gentlemen, once you get settled, we'll give you names for the record, the floor will be yours.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, my name is Ian Bailey, I am a land use attorney with the firm of Pierce Atwood in Boston. With me here tonight is Jason Aktus, who is an engineer, uh, the project engineer for this, this particular, uh, uh, car wash. Uh, we're here representing S and C Realty Investment, who is the owner of the property, uh, and our direct client, which is All Rig USA, which is a national developer, all sorts of different types of real estate projects, including car washes. So this is for site plan review for a proposed car wash in 1879 Main Street. Uh, Jason will go through the site plan and the usual, uh, site plan review issues in a couple of minutes. Um, all I want to say is that, uh, two weeks ago, we appeared before the Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, which approved a special permit for this use. Requires both planning board, site plan review, and a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, and that was granted, um, about two weeks ago. And I asked Jason to take it from here.
Good evening, members of the board, my name is Jason Aktos. Jason Aktos, civil engineer with Stonefield Engineering Design, 120 Washington Street, Salem, Massachusetts. Um, I'm going to start this presentation with an.
So, one, if you're going to use the E's, I'm going to have you put it maybe up over here so everybody can see it. That's one. And two, you're going to have to get the microphones, because they won't be able to pick you up on the recording, otherwise we're at home. Thank you.
You don't know how many places don't have the remote mic. So you're.
We're first.
We're high tech, yeah.
All righty. So I'm going to start with an aerial photo here of the existing conditions on site. Um, as Mr. Bailey said, this is 1879 Main Street in Tewksbury. The site is at the south easterly corner of the intersection of Main Street, Livingston Street, and Airport Road. Um, this is basically the existing fund lands. I believe all the board is aware of this, um, site here. It's been vacant for a number of years. Um, essentially, what's going on onsite is approximately 2.3 acre parcel, um, with 65% of the existing coverage as impervious surfaces, um, whether it's the, what we believe to be is the go-kart, existing go-karts, as well as the asphalt parking lot. Um, the remainder of the site is a, um, abandoned mini golf course, as well as perimeter landscaping. Um, access to the site is proposed via a right ingress driveway that's basically creates a fifth leg of the intersection for Main Street and Airport Road and Livingston Street. And then there's also a shared access drive with the adjacent easterly parcel, um, that is the Domino's property, as well as there's a brook that runs along the southernly portion of the property, um, known as Heath Brook. No portion of the brook actually falls within the site, but there is the riverfront portion, um, associated with the brook that falls within the site. And there is also a flood plain associated with the brook that extends approximately halfway through the middle of the site. Um, this is FEMA flood zone AE, and there is an established base flood elevation associated with this. Um, I'll get more into that when we get into the grading and stormwater components of the site. Just going to flip over to our existing conditions plan, um, we'll kind of show what's going on here a little bit better. You can see the delineation of the FEMA flood hazard zone, basically right through the middle of the site here, and we're basically proposing to keep all of our improvements, improvements as much as possible out of that zone. And then moving on to a site plan rendering, this is basically a color vibe, colorized version of our site plan. Um, we are proposing approximately a 5,000 square foot automated car wash. This is a modern express car wash, um, really trying to make the customer experience as easy, as convenient as possible. Um, essentially, customers have the option to stay in their car the entire way through their car wash, or they also have the ability to get out and vacuum their cars themselves after they go through the tunnel. Um, so how I'm going to kind of wa, walk you through this is pretend we're taking a car wash, um, and we're going to circulate through the site. So we're proposing a full movement driveway off of Main Street. This is under DOT jurisdiction. Um, this is under DOT review as well. We have submitted a traffic impact study to DOT, as well as the town of Tewksbury, and that is still under review. So you'll have the option either to make your left turn in or your right turn in off of Main Street, essentially circulate through the driveway and make your first right and head toward the three pay stations that are being proposed. As you head to, towards your pay stations, there are three, the one closest to the building and the one, and the middle pay station lane, these will both be serviced by a site supervisor. Essentially, there'll be a menu board with a point of sales that directs you what kind of car wash service you like, you can select that, and then there's a gate that'll open when you select it, and then you circulate to the tunnel. The outermost lane is a VIP lane, this is for monthly customers only. Essentially, there's an overhead license plate reader that's provided before the station. As you make your way into that third lane, it'll read your monthly service subscription, and you're able to continue on, kind of like an EZ Pass service, right into the tunnel. Um, as you move forward, kind of plan view, this is south, um, you have the option to either use the emergency bypass lane that is provided, or you continue on your way into the tunnel. This is fully automated, you don't get out of your car. It's approximately takes, as we see on average, 2.5 minutes, um, to get through the tunnel, and the tunnel itself can hold up to five cars at any time. The actual queuing capacity that's being provided for the pay stations is approximately 21 cars, um, and we're seeing anywhere from 15 to 20 cars typically being needed at these modern express car washes, so sufficient capacity, queuing capacity is being proposed. As you make your way through the tunnel, you'll head back down to the same drive aisle that you went to into the pay stations, the two-way 30-foot drive aisle that's being shown, and then you'll make your way into essentially what's created as a four-leg intersection. Um, there is cross access that is being maintained with the adjacent easterly property, the Domino's. This exists under current conditions, and we're proposing that as a benefit to both properties, um, and is also recommended by DOT, you know, moving all the traffic, or some of the traffic off of Main Street and allowing easier flow through the properties. If you decide to continue your way through the rear of the site, there are overhead vacuum booms that are being proposed there. These essentially provide, you know, an amenity to the customer. After you get your car washed, you can do your additional vacuuming if you would like, and there's also a trash receptacle being shown there, um, as well as some other cleaning agents that are, um, located there as well. And then after your car washed, you essentially make your way back out to the four-leg intersection, which will be completely controlled by stop signs and stop bars. And then again, you have your option of going via the cross access to the adjoining property or make your way onto Main Street and have your, either your right out or your left out. Um, we are complying with all bulk regulations for the mixed-use business zone, which we are located in, and there are a few site plan waivers that are being requested along with this application, um, per the review letters and staff memos that we received from the town. Um, the town is in support of our one-way 11-foot and 13-foot drive aisle lanes that are being proposed for the pay stations. Um, I believe there's a 20-foot minimum requirement from the town. We are showing a minimum of 11 feet there. There is also, so in our initial submission to the planning board, we had shown access to Airport Road as well. Um, we did believe that we had rights to this road as a private road, but after, you know, digging into title a little bit more, we have figured out that we actually don't have rights to promote, or to provide access to Airport Road, but we are in conversations with that owner. Um, we would like to have this access, but at this time, that's something we are not sure that we are legally allowed to do. Um, associated with that Airport Road driveway was requested a minimum separation from the signalized intersection of Airport Road and Main Street. At this time, we are not requesting that waiver, but we would still like, um, to eventually propose this, once we get that all figured out with our title review. An additional waiver request that is currently being asked for is proposing our accessory structures in front of the front building line. We have a masonry block. We have a masonry block, trash enclosure being shown, which is being screened by some evergreen trees. It is with, it is outside of the front yard setback and the side yard setbacks, but it is in front of this front building line currently. And we also have two vacuum producer enclosures being proposed that are in front of the building, the front building line. Essentially, these are going to be enclosed, enclosed enclosures, again, with CMU block. This basically will help with the noise attenuation that's produced from these vacuum producers, as well as one signage waiver request is being asked for, for the height of the monument sign that is being proposed along the Main Street frontage. We are proposing some landscaping around the entire site in accordance with the zoning ordinance, basically trying to block any spillage from the headlights that you typically see with motor vehicles from any adjoining properties. And getting into our grading and drainage. The site is considered a redevelopment per Town of Tewksbury and Massachusetts DEP regulations, basically under existing conditions. Approximately 65% is considered impervious coverage, and under proposed conditions, approximately 40% of the site is being proposed as impervious. And due to that, we are considered a redevelopment, not a new development. We do meet all standards that are required per the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook, specifically standards one through seven, where we'll be reducing flows, meeting water quality, providing necessary groundwater recharge, and also making sure that our discharge into Heath Brook in the rear of the site doesn't cause any erosion or scour. We are basically providing the necessary flood plain compensation that will be required by the Conservation Commission. We have not met with the commission yet, but we are planning to do so in the near future. And we do believe we are complying with all the requirements. Getting into the proposed utilities on-site. Currently, what's being shown is two connections to the Airport roadside. Currently, it's the electric and the gas connection. There is existing service there, which make it a lot easier for us to connect into as opposed to Main Street. But at this time, we are not sure that we're allowed to do this, so we will have to update everything to, again, be back along Main Street. We're proposing three 2,000 gallon reclamation tanks. These essentially reuse some of the, some of the water demand that's needed for a car wash. Typically, when you think of a car wash, you think of a high water demand needed, and this basically allows the reuse of some of that water. We know there was some issues with the oil and water separator that's being proposed as well for our sanitary service, and we will be updating our plans to essentially make sure it's not a septic tank and avoiding that bathroom line that is currently going into it. And then getting a little bit into the building itself, just want to show some of the renderings that have been put together. There's breakup in the wall. Basically, you have your fiber cement board, some EPIS and some CMU block that provides some nice contrast throughout the building here. You can see the elevations with the parking, with the overhead vacuum booms that are produced, are proposed, as well as the exist, or the proposed signage throughout the building. There are six building signs that are being proposed. Ms. Lawler's review letter did bring up a electronic message board that I believe was referring to the wall sign shown here. We'll leave that to your discretion if that's defined as a electronic message board or just a wall sign, because waivers will be needed if it's an electronic message board. But there are six being proposed that meet all other requirements, as well as an eight-foot-high monument sign that is shown along the front of the property. And that's just about it for my presentation, but happy to answer any questions.
Alright, very good. Anthony, that?
No, not really. A minute, no. Say what I said at the zoning board, it's a long vacant site. You know, the proposed use is consistent with the other commercial uses in the area. It's a suitable location, but, you know, your job is more to drill down on the details, the access and stormwater and those types of things. You know, we have gone over the review letters from the engineering department and from planning. There are a lot of requests for additional information, do this on the plan, do that on the plan. Now, I have not yet discussed any of it in detail with my client. Certainly, we'll take care of all the administrative things, and we'll try to accommodate everything that's been requested, but I can't tell you that we can do all of those right now. Part of it is being driven by the Airport Road issue, which is complicated. I ended up going back, I don't know, seven or eight years on the title to figure it out. Normally, if you have bought a private way, you have access in the private way, but this is not a normal situation, and I won't bore you with the details. But we hope to work that out with the person who holds the rights in the private way.
Alright, we'll start with Mr. Fowler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad you brought out the Airport Road because as this gentleman started talking about it, I said, "That's not usable right now." But let's say it was. On the plan, you show the driveway about 50 feet away from Route 38. I was down there today. I've been, I'd known that for years, but I've never had the opportunity to sit there and wait for the light off Livingston Street to change so I could leave. My question to you is, if you swing out of that driveway and you have the first, second, or third car, because no one else is going to swing out, it takes two and a half to three minutes for that light to change. So, I think getting back to, getting to a point where the town engineer is requesting that you get a traffic study on this to find out how this can be best used. And I go along with him, especially after sitting there. So, if you are going out in two and a half minutes for a car wash, you know, and you already got stacked up cars, you're going to be stacked up inside. The other question that came about was the escape lane. Unless you were to use the land to the right of the three lanes that you're proposing, you would have no place for an escape lane. And then the escape lane would have to go all the way around through the, the areas where you have the charging stations and the vacuums to get out, straight out onto Main Street or go right into Domino's. So, I just don't know what your plan is, if that's what you intend to do, or how you're going to form a, an escape lane. I have a few more, but I'm not going to take everybody's time to speak, and I think you have a lot of homework to do, especially with the list given to you by our town engineer. That's all for now.
Mr. Fritzai.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a number of questions. I've been to the site as well today. Have you spoken to any of your buddies down there?
We have not had conversations besides with the Airport Road owner.
Okay.
Mr. Fritzai, if I could just jump in on that. We did speak at the ZBA hearing with the owner of the plaza where Domino's is located, and I know they're here tonight, so I'm...
Okay. Well, I did speak to one of the buddies there today, and he had some concerns, so we discussed what was going there, and he's a renter and not an owner, but still concerned as well. And one of the issues, and I experienced it today as well, like Mr. Fowler mentioned, is that light that's there doesn't always pick up cars that are there. I know you're proposing a fifth light there, is that correct?
Currently, we are not proposing that additional Airport Road access.
No, but you're, you're proposing a fifth light at that coming out of your facility, correct?
We are not proposing any traffic lights, no.
Okay. So, when you come out, you have to go right or left? Does that light affect you from there?
So, this is, we have had a pre-application meeting with DOT before we formally submitted, showing the exact access off of Main Street as we're showing here. And they don't have any concerns with that access. They do think that there might need to be some striping improvements made to the signalized intersection, but under existing conditions and under our proposed build conditions with the car wash, there's really a diminutinous kind of impact to the signal. So, under DOT review, and at this time, we believe that it's going to be, no additional modifications needed.
And I don't know how you can say that, but, you know, that's to be resolved later on, but, so if a car was on Airport Road coming out, and a car was in the, in the car wash, who has the right of way to go left?
You're saying from our proposed site on Airport Road?
Yes.
We don't have access on Airport Road currently.
No, I'm just saying if there's two cars, one on Airport Road, and one car coming out of the car wash, both trying to go left, who has the preference there? It just seems like it's a bottleneck right there.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, but where their exit is would be just short of the light on 38. So, if you came out and went left, you'd be stopped by the red light if someone has a green light coming out of Airport Road. It's just beyond, back before the light, that's why. So, they won't actually run into each other, what you're talking about.
Right. Well, I had to go right today because the light wasn't working. So, one of your buddies told me that light that's up there now could go two or three cycles without allowing a car to come out of that, out of Airport Road. And that may be the same thing for you if you guys wanted to go left coming out of your driveway, so, but, with the light, but, that's just one of my issues and so forth. But, so my other issue is, you're aware there's two other car washes on Main Street?
To our knowledge, we were not aware of that, no.
I knew there was one.
Okay. There's two car washes within a half a mile of your site now, one to the left and one to the right. So, I don't know, so I guess my question is, how do you propose to beat their prices and think that this is going to be a successful venture? I mean, there's two other ones, and then there's a third one in town as well, on the other part of town down near Sharshene Street. So, there's, there's two within a half a mile, three within a mile and a half probably of your proposed car wash. So, I guess my question is, is there a need for another car wash in that particular location? So, but...
I won't speak to whether specifically a need in the town, but in terms of, you know, providing better service, as you said, to these other car washes, this really is meant to be an easy, convenient service to the customer with speed, really don't have to get through, get out of your car wash at all. There's nothing provided inside the building that would warrant you to get out of your cars at all.
Okay.
Yeah, it, maybe I can speak to that just a bit. You know, it's a franchise. Well, not necessarily a franchise, but it's like a franchise. You know, it's a model, you know, it's been rolled out in several parts of the country. I can get you some more information about that. I think that might be helpful. You know, the customer believes quite strongly that they're, you know, top of the market, and we can bring in the information to show you that.
Okay, great. But, Mr. Chairman, I'm all set right now.
Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just like to preface my questions by saying that I think it's wonderful that you guys are looking at a, at a site like that, a previously developed site to build on. I think that a, something new there would be better than what's there now. So, that being said, I think you guys still have a lot of balls in the air, it seems like right now, you know, Airport Road being one of the, one of the, one of the big potential stumbling blocks for you. You know, and, you know, and that being said, I think that probably requests for waivers at this point might be a bit premature. So, but, putting all that aside for the moment, because I think my, my fellow board members have addressed those issues, I had a couple of concerns, and I know the engineer picked up one of them where, where on your site plan, you showed a concrete sidewalk, you know, tying into an asphalt sidewalk, you know, that, that really can't happen, you know. So, I think the engineer already addressed that and said that there's going to be five feet concrete sidewalks. And all of the other mechanical issues, the, the lack of slope on the sewer drain and, you know, the water main size and so on and so forth are going to be dealt with by other, other departments in town. So, now, you touched on briefly about, you know, headlights and what are the hours of operation on a, on a business like that?
So, the hours are, of operation are seven days a week, eight to eight.
And then the outside lights, like what happens to those, like where the vacuums are and so forth? And what keeps people from going in and vacuuming their car at midnight, I guess? Is there, is there, is everything shut off or...
The lights will be shut off basically one hour after closure. So, there's really not going to be any real light to be, you know, polluted on-site. And in terms of the producers, those will also be shut off after hours. You won't be able to access the site, or, you'll be able to access the site, but you won't be able to do anything in terms of the actual car wash operation yourself. You know, the tunnels will be closed, the producers will be off.
Okay, so part of my concern there is, is that your, other than the many items that engineering needs to have you guys address, is the, is the light trespass from the 25 light fixtures, the A fixtures that you have on your lighting plan? You know, LED fixtures are great as far as energy consumption and so forth, but sometimes they can be very blinding, you know, if they're, if they're not directed the right way. And all of your other fixtures are downlights on your, on your lighting plan, except for those don't really specify where the light goes, you know, those 25 lights at the vacuum. And I, and if I'm not mistaken, I think in the engineer's report, he, some of those parking spaces were not going to be long enough anyways, right? Is that an issue there?
Our parking spaces are in compliance. All the vacuum spaces are 15 feet wide and 20 feet long, and then these six employee spaces are nine and a half feet wide by 18 and a half feet long.
Okay, that's more of an engineering thing. I was just, it just kind of jumped into my head there. But I, but I would definitely like to see if, when and if this project moves forward, I'd like to see what type of controls there'll be on the, on the 25 light fixtures, on the, on the vacuum spaces there. I envision, you know, I envision LED, bright LED lights that are gonna, that may impact drivers driving by, it could impact, you know, other people in the neighborhood. Sometimes those lights are very bright. And then just, just an FYI, and I may, I may be wrong about this, but if I'm not mistaken, I don't think Massachusetts allows EPIS on the first floor of buildings, but you can double-check with your code control if you've done that.
Yeah, we'll have to double-check that with our architects. In terms of those LED lights for each vacuum producer, those are being modeled in our current lighting plan that was submitted. It's really just, as you said, more of like a spotlight. There's no real pollution. So, along the, I guess, the easterly property line, which would be closest to the adjoining property, we're basically seeing illumination levels of zero, just because, you know, these are more...
Okay, I didn't see that spelled out on the lighting plan, though. I saw the other two light fixtures that you're using. It had that spelled out, but not those particular fixtures.
We can make that more clear.
Okay. The, I think that's basically, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Alright. Would you do me a favor? Would you put your rendering back up?
Colorize it?
Thank you. So, my first question is, you mentioned the queue space available. Did you do the queue space number based just on lanes one and two?
No, that's for all three spaces.
So, the VIP lane that only VIPs can use is part of your queue count?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Would you find out for me what the queue count is for non-MIPs? Because unless they are, and cars start queuing up that are just regular folks, you're counting a lane they can't use. So, I need to know a number for lanes one and two only.
We can get you that number.
Alright. That's, that's going to be the least of your concerns, though. So, you have a, you have problems here. So, you're, you, two of the findings we have to make, one in five here, are going to be big issues, I think, for you, because I don't... are gonna be big issues, I think, for you, because I don't see how your ins and outs are gonna work here. Your in, and I'll start with the part that's inside your site. The minute you come in, you have to make a hard right to get into the queue lanes. So you're basically at almost a complete stop in order to make that right. It's not something you can do at speed. And it potentially has a car coming out of having gone through the car wash there, so it's not like you're gonna have that extra space on the other side to take that turn. So you're talking about basically, there's no room for any car that might be following you while you're trying to do that. That means the potential of a second car, just as few as two cars, being back out on the 38 while someone's trying to make that turn. And I'm talking about whether you're driving, you know, a, you know, an SUV all the way down to just a regular small car, you're gonna have an issue with that. And potentially having a second car already out on 38, and that's only at two. All right, so there's one issue. As you're coming out of the site, no, actually, we'll come out and we'll talk about going in again. If you're coming from Lowell towards Wilmington, you've just come through that set of lights when you're supposed to try to make that turn to go into this site there, if you're doing it off of 38. That's potentially an issue, because you're basically, a minute the cars start going on 38, you're gonna start backing them up, trying to make what is an extremely slow turn into this site to manage it, because you can't come in with any kind of speed. All right, so that's, and you're making a hard right. On your outs, you know, if you're going to the right, not a major deal. But if you're coming out of there and you wanna go left, you're gonna cross the south traffic on 38 to try and get into the north side immediately at a light. And anyone in this room that's ever been in Tewksbury before, the likelihood that there's anything less than two or three cars minimum at that light at any time of day is guaranteed. So you're coming, you're potentially not even gonna be able to make that left. So what do you do? Do you sit there and then when there's finally an opportunity, you're jetting across to try and take that left? Or are you gonna potentially block 38, trying to come out of there until you can get into that left lane? To go north? That's a problem, because you're talking about a huge traffic jam, potentially right in the middle of that intersection because of where that is and someone trying to come out and take a left. That's a problem. So that's, that's, those right there are gonna be real issues. Let me move on, so... If, if in the event that you, you're talking about Airport Road, because I wanna kinda do this all at once, because I can probably deal with it, whether you do or don't get access to Airport Road. If you're using Airport Road, that light triggers. It's a light that almost never triggers at this point, because almost no one comes out of Airport Road. There could be serious consequences traffic-wise if that light starts going off constantly to allow people coming out of Airport Road, something that doesn't happen now and there's already traffic problems at that intersection just for the 38 traffic and the Livingston Street traffic. So that's a serious issue, even if you gain access on Airport Road. So, you know, I, I have, I have real concerns about how traffic works here um, in almost any configuration you have with the driveways. So that's, that's something that's gonna be a hard hurdle to get over, I think. How does your layout change if you do get access on Airport Road? This design you have here, does it change at all dramatically, none?
The layout won't change significantly. Um, essentially that two-way drive aisle that leads you into the pay stations that'll open up into Airport Road, um, and basically you cut right through.
Where?
If you continued this two-way aisle, it'd essentially continue right into Airport Road.
So right as you come onto Airport Road is where you wanna access in?
Correct.
Okay.
That might have to get moved back.
You think?
Yeah, that, that would probably...
I don't, I don't see how that's gonna work at all, if that's what you're planning, because you have the exact same issue now. You've got cars coming off of 38. And as soon as they're making that turn onto Airport Road, you're expecting them to be able to make a left. Not to mention the fact that there might be cars in their way to make a left. Or you're immediately, after one car, you're out of space already and you've got a car out on 38 in the way. This, I don't see how you could possibly make that work if you tried to put the entrance up at the front end of that piece of property to work, to use your queue lines. So if that's the only change to your design, I don't see how that's gonna work.
So we totally understand your concerns with both the driveway off of Main Street and if we were to get that Airport Road access. Um, and we do agree to comply with the third-party review for the traffic engineering that's recommended. And just again, wanna reiterate that this access here off of Main Street is DOT jurisdiction.
Can I back up for one second? When you say agree, the alternative would be you saying no to us, is that right? Like saying you won't do it, is that?
We're, we're not gonna say no. We're, we're, yeah.
Before you do that, you might wanna just check.
No, we're, we're familiar with 53G.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I was a little confused.
While, while we're on that subject, um, you know, I, you know, I'm sure you have someone that you regularly use, all that sort of thing. Um, we would wanna, you know, just get, you know, a look at the proposal, but, you know.
Okay.
No, we, we, we understand that we are responsible for, uh, paying for the cost of peer review services.
Okay. So go ahead, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Yeah, so just again, our, the access off of Main Street is under DOT jurisdiction. That was our, basically our biggest concern with this site. Um, when we started, the access we can get there. So we have looked at these throat lengths for the driveways, understand your concerns, um...
Just again, I hate to stop you, but the jurisdiction for giving you the curb cut is DOT. All right? Getting to do the project is us. So if we don't find that it's not a problem for traffic, it's not gonna matter to you what DOT will or won't let you do. So I understand that you're hanging your hat a little bit on DOT telling you you might be able to do it. And, you know, until they actually tell you you can, that's neither here nor there. But just don't get confused between those two things though, because DOT might tell you, you could do it. We're gonna tell you if you can. All right, so just, you're gonna have to find a way to, you know, to work with those two things. All right, so you're, when you go back and you look at this, you're gonna have to be able to answer these questions, at least for me, and I won't speak for the rest of the board members, but I have serious concerns with how this traffic will work, whether DOT tells you you can cut into the curb or not. Okay, so you, you're gonna have to figure out how to explain that, all right?
Understood.
Okay. All right, so before we get, don't want to bog down too long in this, because obviously you're not gonna have answers for me tonight, obviously, for that, because you're gonna have to look at some stuff. Um, I do have some concerns about you putting your trash almost right on top of Domino's in the front there. That seems concerning to me. Is there a reason it has to be up at the front like that? Because I'm also wondering about the emptying of the trash, because you're gonna bring in a truck to empty that, I presume, and you're gonna put it right damn it in front of everything.
That's correct. So in terms of placing it in the front yard, it's not technically within this front yard setback, um, but it does provide the easiest means of actually getting to the trash for when it's being picked up.
Uh huh.
Um, this essentially will be off-peak hours, maybe once or twice a week, basically when there's really no one at the car wash itself.
When you say easiest though, what I mean is, so you, I, I envision it, I, and if I'm wrong, correct me. So you'd have the trash truck come in, it would drive just past the dumpster to back up to dump, to empty the dumpster, right? Does that sound right?
This would end up being a front-loading trash truck.
Okay, so then the easier thing that you're talking about is the trash truck is going to come in there somehow, loop around to come back to face the trash to empty, is that right? How's the trash truck gonna face that when it comes into the site? Because it's almost right when it comes in the site. How is a front-loading trash truck going to take out that without turning around?
We can provide auto turn movement templates, um, if you would like, but basically it would make either the left or right in off of Main Street. And we're providing a 30-foot-wide drive aisle separating the vacuum spaces. Essentially it'll pull in, do its thing with the front loader, and it'll have adequate room to basically K-turn out of there. Um, but we will provide those turning movements.
So I believe that, what I'm saying is, in terms of the ease of it, having it in the front versus pushing it to the back, it's not gonna change anything that the trash truck has to do in order to accomplish its task, correct? It's gonna have to do a turnaround somewhere.
That's correct.
It's either gonna do it before it picks up the trash or it's gonna do it after it picks up the trash, right? It can't do it without, is what I'm saying, right?
Correct.
Okay, so then my question's the same, which is, is there any real specific reason why it needs to be at the front versus towards the back?
No, we can take a look at, you know, reevaluating of where we can put this trash truck.
Because the other thing I'm thinking too is that you're talking about having all your vacuum things along the side of your building there, right?
There is one next to, we're talking about the producers or the actual enclosure.
Yeah, I don't know. You said vacuum, right? The vacuum machines or something?
Yeah, what actually provides the power to the overhead booms. There's one along the parking aisle fronting the building, and then there's one next to that trash enclosure right now.
Okay. But generally, that's where the activity is gonna be going on, as opposed to the far end of the site, where only someone who all of a sudden decided they didn't wanna get their car washed is gonna head out that dropout lane, right? Is that right?
Not sure if I'm following.
Just not, because I'm right. It, you're only gonna go out that back end if you've decided not to get your car washed, right? There's no other reason that you'd be in that, that pullout, right?
The turnaround area provided?
Maybe I'm wrong. What is this?
That is an emergency bypass lane.
Okay, I'm sorry, I guess I used the wrong terminal.
The only reason you're gonna be in the, the emergency bypass is if you've had an emergency or suddenly decided you don't wanna have your car washed, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So what I'm saying is, that whole end of your site is the least active of your entire site, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so again, I'm saying I think it might make sense if the trash goes down there in the least active section of what you've got going on, because it's gonna make for the easiest keeping it away from everybody and it's gonna be the easiest for picking up and getting stuff up. But you decide, but that's, I'm just suggesting that that might make sense. Uh, let's see, what else have I got here? There was a question that had gotten asked to me, and I don't, you know, maybe you, you guys can give me the answer, but this site, this, this parcel is actually split in two pieces, is it not?
Zoning-wise?
Yep.
Yes.
And the two zones are what?
Uh, the rear is industrial and the front is commercial.
Okay.
Because it's...
The commercial's frozen.
It's all frozen.
Well, right, but the back section doesn't allow for car washes.
That's right. And, uh, the only, we, we discussed this directly with the building inspector in the, uh, pre-application meeting, and we actually revised the plans so that the only uses in the industrial district is that, you see the little tail on the left there?
Yep.
Parking? Um, he was satisfied that that was a passive use in the industrial district that was, was, um, acceptable.
Could you design this without using that piece?
Uh, I don't know if we can meet the parking requirements. We'd have to look, we can look at it.
Okay. Then, then I'm a little, I'm hesitant in that you're using the piece of the property to pull off this project that wouldn't allow this kind of project. But, but we can talk to the building inspector about it and try to figure it out.
The building inspector and I talked about that quite a bit. Um, you know, there's very, actually pretty good case law about the circumstances when you can use land in an adjacent zoning district uh, that is not zoned for the particular use, it's passive versus active uses.
Okay.
You know, there's a, the most well-known case is one, there's somebody tried to put stormwater in the, uh, you know, say in the, the zoning district where it was not allowed, that was found to be active use, but parking has traditionally been found to be a passive use.
If, if that's, if the building inspector's coming down on that end, I'm, I'm not gonna argue him, that's fine. But I will be concerned, because if we do, if you do go about coming in off Airport Road and your design has to change in order to try and make that work, that you don't spill over into that zone, because if you do...
Yeah, no, we, we had an early design where, uh, actually part of the queue went into that zone and, you know, when we talked with him, it became clear that we needed to fix that.
All right. I think that's probably more than enough at this point for, um, stuff to get answers for. So I'll stop there. And with that, I will open it up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this project? You come up, uh, if you could return that to the podium, if you don't mind. Sir, once the microphone is returned, if you just state your name and your address for the record, the floor will be yours.
Good evening, uh... My name is, uh, John Karamaris. I represent the, uh, the fam, my family owns the Domino's building right next...
Pull that just over a little bit, so it's right underneath you. Here you go.
My family owns the Domino's building right next door. Uh, and I was here at the, um, ZPA hearing a couple of weeks ago. The engineer for the, for the, for the applicant proposed a cross-access through our parcel, okay? There is no cross-access through our parcel, either through easement by prescription or there's no express or implied access through 1899 Main Street. There's nothing that DOT can say or do that would prohibit me from erecting a bollard directly in front of there, which, what is essentially, looking at this plan, a pressure relief valve for all these cars to, when they, what, what's gonna happen is, the cars are gonna exit the car wash onto 38 and anyone that drives down 38 knows that if there's a stoplight there, especially during lunchtime, the traffic sometimes will go past McDonald's when you go, when you're taking a left going towards Lowell on 38. So what's gonna happen is, the cars are gonna back up in, into the, um, the lane, the exit lane, and then they wanna use my parcel as a relief valve to push cars to go over 1899 Main Street and then exit farther down 38 towards Market Basket. That's the plan, really, and that's why they have this proposed cross-access on the plan. That's not gonna solve the problem that they have, but we, without even getting to that, they don't have the right to cross over our parcel. It's as simple as that. The, the parcel has been vacant for 28-plus years. I believe it was 1994, it could've been, could've been 1996 or 1997. That's 28-long Massachusetts years. So there's no, it, it hasn't been used at all, it's been vacant, okay? So... I, I don't know how they claim to have, they, they've already admitted that they don't have access from Airport Road. They've said as much on the record tonight. I don't know how they claim to have some type of prescriptive use of my parcel to cross over. I, I, they haven't presented anything to the board that would suggest that they have a right to use this. Okay? Essentially what they're, what they're gonna do here, what they wanna do is they wanna put that exit 50 feet from a hard-lighted intersection. So... I, I'm all for, I'm, I'm, I'm all for developing this parcel. It, it, it needs to be, something needs to be done with that, okay? I, I'm fully on board with that. But there's no way that this would work. I don't think this would be approved in a, um, in a third-world country where you would put a car wash exit 50 feet from a four-way lighted intersection. That just doesn't...
Weird example, but okay.
That doesn't make any sense to me that, I don't, I don't know what DOT, I don't, they keep talking about DOT. I don't know what DOT would say or do about that, that obvious, clear problem. The, over the years, we've been approached by, by several, um, potential buyers of a lot. We've discussed, um, a potential easement through the, through the rear of, um, in between our parcel 1899 and I believe it's 1897, the one right next to us, where a car would enter and exit through that rear driveway. But this, this here, um... It just, it, it's not gonna work, um, simply put. Um, and that's really all I had to say about it.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Any comments?
And we have, you know, we've spoken, I, you know...
Okay.
We, I'm aware of the issue and we're, we're looking into it.
Okay, all right. Anyone else with any questions, comments or concerns on this? Going once, twice?
Question.
Oh, you slipped it in.
Oh, yeah.
Name and address for the record please and then the microphone is yours.
Yeah, Daryl Sitler, uh, family owns property on 1875B, right on Airport Road. Possibilities of Airport Road becoming a town road?
Not our department.
Not your department, okay.
At least not in this context.
I didn't know if that would alleviate a lot of the problems or the issues with access for-
It may, uh, it may or may not cause its own set of prob- I, you know, you gotta take that up elsewhere.
Okay, I just, um, that was just a thought, you know, listening to everything that was, uh, that was said if that would alleviate traffic because that would leave the four-way intersection a four-way, would put more traffic on Airport Road, but it would also, uh, I don't know if that would gain them access to the rear of it, but-
Again, not, not ad hoc, but obviously something people to consider as well.
I don't know if it works or not, but, thank you.
Enough?
Thank you.
All right, I'll do it one more time. Anyone else with questions, comments or concerns? Once, twice? All right, I'll bring you back to the board. Uh, does anyone on the board have any additional comments they wish to make at this time?
I'll say it, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, Ms. Louder.
Non-board comment. Um, so in the town engineer's recommendations, um, one of the comments is that the engineering division recommends a peer review by the town's traffic consultant and attorney Bailey indicated that that was something that they would be, um, you know, willing to entertain. So is that something that the board wants to do before the next hearing, so I can get on that?
I mean, I think we'd need it to do anything more anyways, so that's obviously, you know, we can't force you to do it, but, you know, uh, I think it would be in best interest to getting through the next hearing.
I can't tell you I have authority from the client to say yes. Uh, I can tell you that I've told them what the law is in Massachusetts and I'm confident I'm gonna get authority to say yes because, I mean-
Well, we'll all wait to be surprised at our next hearing to see what not happening.
It'll be, it'll be an awkward conversation if I have to come back and say no.
So, all right, so that part's taken care of.
Yes.
Um, other than that, I suspect that you'd like to be put on the agenda for a meeting in August.
Well, how long do you think the peer review, I mean, we really shouldn't come back until the peer review is done, I would think.
Typically, it's two to three weeks.
We don't need to get until the middle of August.
If you get it in two to three weeks, then fine.
Right, but if, if, if it turns out that you need more time, you know, you can just call in and ask for the, you know, the continuance. We don't mind that, you know, once, you know, once, twice kind of thing.
That's fine.
But then if it turns out you're done and you didn't, then we can't get you on.
Exactly.
All right, so then with that, I will, uh, entertain a motion to continue this to 7:05 on August 22nd.
So moved.
Uh, we have a motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to agenda item D, 1800 Main Street, uh, signed special permit. So I have a motion to waive the public reading. So motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, once you get settled, just state your name for the record, the floor is yours.
Hi, my name is, um, Andy Serrato, Serrato Signs, 15 Dewey Street, West of Mass. Uh, what we have is, uh, basically we stand alone building for Starbucks. Uh, the very first page is the, uh, shows the building and there's different letters showing where each sign is going around the building. Uh, the north elevation, they're looking to put a set of Starbucks letters, sits on the roof towards the front of the building. On the south elevation, they're looking to put the Starbucks letters in the same area but the opposite side of the building, but they're also looking to put a drive-through sign there that would direct the folks around the building to the drive-through area. On your next page is the, uh, front elevation which has the siren logo that they usually put on the front of the building, again with a drive-through sign on the front. What they basically do is when they set up their building, they have these drive-through signs that just direct the people all around the building through the drive-through. On the rear elevation, there's not many signs. The next page just shows the height and the length of the Starbucks letters, size of the siren that goes in the front of the building, size of the drive-through sign. As you're exiting the drive-through, they have a, um, sign that says "Thank you" and then they have an exit only that if anyone drives straight in, it keeps them from driving straight ahead into that drive-through area. Um, they also place a sign within the area that, a ground sign that says "Drive-through" as they pull into the building, it shows, pulls into the lot that would direct them around the building as well. There's an existing pylon at the front of the building. Uh, they plan on just refacing that sign. I believe my assistant had some conversations with the town and that square footage would be allowed because it's just replacing the face on the existing pylon. And then the last couple of signs are the, um, is a clearance bar they put up at the very beginning of the, the building as you're driving around the building because of a canopy that they have over the drive-through for protection. As they drive up to the order screen, they have a pre-menu board that people can look at before they actually get to the screen itself. They have a canopy which has a order screen and right in front of that, they call it a five-panel menu board. It's actually three individual panels, but two of them are divided into two, which is why they call it a five-panel. And I kinda went through kinda quick brief, but I'm more than willing to answer any questions along the way.
We'll start with Mr. Fratelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, you know, I'm all in favor of bringing a new business into the town, like Starbucks. So my question is, why can't we abide by the current zoning for your signs?
My understanding, um, of it is just it was limiting the amount of signs they had in the square footage. Um, they wanted to be able to get some advertising coming from each direction down the street and the building does sit back from the road quite a bit. So by having a little sign on each end of the building, it would help people be able to see it coming up and down the street. Plus the identification on the front of the building where they want it larger, it's just because of the setback, they're trying to get a larger sign.
I understand you want larger and for, for, we have zoning regulations for that reason to keep these sign sizes according to the zones and looking for all these waivers for the signs in section, of section 6.2-d, so. You know, I don't have a problem with the business coming in, but I have a problem with the signs being overbearing on, on the site, so. I mean, I know you need small drive-through signs and all that, but I guess I have a problem with all the signage on the building and the one on up front and, and "drive-through, drive-through", so. So that's part of my issue, you know, with the sign, signage and what you're needing. Um, I've been through a couple of other Starbucks sites, one in Wilmington and one in Beaufort as well, and they don't have the signage that you're looking for here at all, you know, so, uh. I don't know, I think they're probably the same sized buildings, but, um, so that's my, my, my issue going forward, so. I'll have some of my other colleagues speak as far as their opinion of the signage, but that's mine. Thank you.
Mr. Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd, uh, almost concur with Mr. Fratelli. I hate to tell the person that's the professional that you don't need it, but, um, when I look at the, uh, the traffic pattern within the property, they've done that correctly. They have the escape lanes, they have all that is necessary to make this work. Now they need cars to go in there. I would think that with the, the proper sized sign out front on the pylon, that would be the first thing a person's gonna see driving down Route 38. If they miss that, they're gonna, and they get closer, they'll see the signs on the left or right, north or south side. But I'm not, I'm not sure they have to be as large as what you're proposing. So I would concur with the size of the sign on the pylon, but I'd like to see a reduction on the north and south side, uh, and, uh, leave the front one alone. That's my own personal opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so Andy, I just wanna get a clarification. On the pylon sign, I, I don't see the letter F on the, uh, on the, on the site plan. I'm just assuming it's in that little island out in the front there. It's designation F on the site plan?
Yeah, my apologies, F, it's, it's not on there, but yes, it's, it's right in front of the island.
No problem.
Where the company is.
So that's a pretty, that's a pretty good sized sign and I can tell you, and you can bring this back to, 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 to the Starbucks folks, uh, that if you had no signs there, everybody I know that likes Starbucks knows it's coming, okay? So, um, I, I understand that you'd be looking for, um, you know, the drive-through, uh, signage and so forth, um, but I mean, really it's, uh, it's, you know, you don't want the place to look like a circus, uh, either, and I, and I really believe and I agree with my, with my, um, my fellow board member that, you know, perhaps we should consider, um, you know, some sort of a trade-off here, you know, if, if you go with the, with the, you know, if you go with the message boards and, uh, and the drive-through signage, maybe you don't need the north and south facing, um, signs on the building. Were, were those gonna be lighted signs as well?
Yes.
So, um, I, I mean, you, you have the siren on the front, which is pretty good size. You have the, you have the, uh, pylon panel. Um, you know, you're gonna have the, yeah, the Starbucks logo on the, on the drive-throughs, you know, maybe, maybe we can think about that. Would you, is that something that you guys would consider?
I, I would have to bring this back to them.
Yeah, I understand that, sure. Yeah, you know, because I mean, it's like, it's like, there's, there's just signs everywhere, you know? So, I mean, I know it's good for the sign business, but, but I'm just thinking that do we really need all of those signs on one building on Main Street in town?
I did take a drive-through before the meeting and looked at the size of the building, of the sign, how it would fit on there aesthetically and I thought it was aesthetically pleasing. I didn't think it was overbearing for the building where it was sitting that far back off the road. Um, I'm not familiar with those other locations on why there's only the one. I know whenever it's a standalone building store, Starbucks corporate workers, they like to have the signs to get people around the building and you can say as much as you want that it's a Starbucks, people will find it, but you'll be surprised how many people will drive by as well, so.
Well, I mean, part of our job as a, a planning board when we're talking about scientists, so, so that the building has a, has, you know, presents nicely and, and, and fits in with the, with the other businesses in, in, in the area and, and, um, in residential areas as well. And I think per, my personal opinion is I think it's a little overbearing, uh, the, the amount of signage that you have on there.
It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a tough thing to understand with some municipalities when they have the special permit and what they're looking for. Sometimes as people look at it and say they have, they don't have an issue with what something's going to be, that there's, the planning board wants to put their stamp on it. Um, I've gone to the municipalities where the side of the square footage is more than what's allowed, but the, the planning board wants to look and say, this makes sense, that's okay, so.
Well, it's my understanding that the original plan didn't have the drive-through, um, signage? That that's something that you're, that you're looking for to add on, right?
That I'd have to refer back to Starbucks to know that.
That's sound right.
There was no sign plan submitted with the original use special permit. The intention was always to bring the, um, the sign plan later on.
I see, okay, okay. All right, so that's my, um, that's my, my two cents worth. I, I, I would like to see if the north and south go away, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so you've already heard from three members, so, um, what I'll say is I can understand the difference for a standalone versus those other two examples because they're within some shopping mall. It's a little bit different, um, in terms of the draw and, you know, that kind of thing, so I can see why there might be a difference, but one that just sort of stands by itself. However, you, you've made the comment a couple of times and it sits kinda far back, which to me would defeat the purpose of putting those signs on the side because they'd be the least likely seen because it sits back like that. The bang for the buck doesn't seem to be there the way it would be if it sat up closer to the street because by the time, you know, with it sitting so far back, the likelihood of those signs being a draw seems less likely. So I could understand too, you know, that the members interested maybe, you know, giving in one area but asking to take away in another because I'm not sure they're gonna get what they're looking for out of it anyways to use what they would normally use, uh, because of the way the site sets up. What you do have the benefit of though is the sightlines are pretty expansive around you in terms of how far away they should be able to see your building, not your building, your client's building because of the setup there. It's very wide open. So, you know, again, the, the likelihood of missing it or missing it because those signs aren't there seems reduced. So I, you know, I've kinda leaned with the other members that, you know, i- if, if we can do away with those side ones and deal with the other signs, I could see that being, you know, a reasonable, uh, middle ground. Um, obviously you gotta take it back to your client and find out how interested they are in pushing the issue and, you know, we can go from there, but I think you've heard, you know, from four members out of four members that would prefer some changes, so.
He was kind of a little bit.
True. And, and you know, I'm generally the least, I'm the least, um, problematic when it comes to signage generally. But even then, even if I were to go that way and you, Mr. Fowler is further along than you maybe, you know, should be giving him credit for it, that still only gets you two out of four.
I, I understand. I'm trying to make a little light of the situation. My, my argument in being in the business for a long period of time is people are driving straight and looking straight and if you're looking at that door, you're not looking as much at the front of the building as you are the side. So when I say it does sit back further, you don't want drivers to turn completely like this. You want them to look at it angles. So that was part of what I was trying to say with the signs on the side, the north and south, it does help the drivers a little bit better.
I understand.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add, add one comment though, but you're still looking at your, you know, your, your pylon sign which is 10 feet across on the front of the store. I mean, that's a pretty good sized sign, right on the, right on the sidewalk. I mean, if you miss that, I don't know that the, that the north-souths are gonna help you there. That's my, in my opinion.
I have some serious concerns about where that driver is too because they're coming up out of light real quick, so, but. Also, the other thing, and I'm surprised, it's usually Mr. Fowler, Fowler mentions it, but the, uh, the sign in the front needs the address of the property on it, just as a reminder. But other than that, I have nothing else right now. We'll open it up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments or concerns on this one? I see, oh, I almost jumped the gun.
Good evening, Gail Stone, Party 612 Road. I really like Starbucks. Um, is there any, um, ordinances about, you know, those nice balloons? Maybe they could make a Starbucks person and put it on their roof?
Not allowed.
Right? Is there any law against that? There is?
Yes.
Well, it's just a suggestion I thought it'd help. Cause I've seen them everywhere, they have them in different towns.
Mr. Chairman, just one comment, if I could. You know, we have made adjustments as far as allowances, as far as signage, so it's not something we don't always allow. We do allow a lot. So just for that point, we, we do allow the majority of time, size-wise and so forth and so on, but.
And I, I don't mean any disrespect to the board whatsoever, but it's, it's, the special permit, it's, it's, it's tough to try to get a feel for the board on what they're looking for. I, I respect everyone's concern on this, but I do have to ask to ask when I go back to my people on this, would the board be in favor if it was a smaller sign on the side at all? Or you just, am I basically here and they don't like the signs on the north and south at all?
Well, before I go through the rest of the members, I'll say this. If you wanna come back with an alternative version, you're free to do so and try to sell it. But I would suggest though, if you're going to come back, come back with the other answer in your pocket in the event that whatever it is you present won't work because otherwise then we're continuing this even further and, you know, so I would suggest come back with multiple possible answers if you're gonna do that. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Duffy?
Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate to, um, you know, in, in an effort to try to expedite things, and, and you tell me if I'm wrong, to, um, to make an approval, I mean, it seems like everybody's kind of in agreement that north-south is a little overkill, that if we, if we approve the lighting plan without the north-south and then, um, and then let, and then let Andy go back or is that gonna, would that create a problem?
The consistency, the way we typically do it, we let him come back in and we deal with it at that point. If, you know, he can go back to his client and find out where they stand on whatever. If he has some alternatives he wants to bring back, that's fine, but then otherwise we start doing things piecemeal and it gets messy.
Understood, okay.
Thank you for reading my mind, Mr. Chairman. Um, the only, um, something I would say that is in favor of Mr. Duffy's suggestion is that, um, if they have a target open date, they need- if they have a target open date, they need the menu boards and they need every, the clearance bar and all that stuff to be able to move forward, and it could be up to them with the, with the signed special permit fees waived for the rest of the year, as motioned by the board a few months ago, to come back for the north-south, let, the 18-inch channel letters on the two sidewalls with the additional drive-through signage, to be able to move forward with the additional, the, the siren and the drive-through sign on the front facade that exceed the allowed square footage, and the additional freestanding signs within the site, including the illuminated directional signs with the business logo, the man, the menu board, the clearance bar, and the, the canopy that has the logo in the rear. That, that's, you know, what I think.
Do we know what, do they have a target?
Not, I'm not sure.
Okay.
But if I may, if I, just like clarification on the special permit, if it, let's say approved tonight, is there an appeal period and everything as well?
Yes, there is. There's a 20-day appeal period, which is why if they had a target opening date, say of the end of summer, early fall, if we're moving out to August 22nd for all of it, then, then they could be pushing the opening date until end of September by the time the 20-day appeal period ends. That's just, you know, kind of food for, food for thought to chew on.
So treat this as if we're done with it, but then they would just bring back another?
If, if they really wanted.
Have to pay.
Right. But they would still have to advertise. Yeah, they would still have to advertise again and do the notices again, but it would be just for the two sets of, of 18-inch channel letters and the additional small drive-through signs to go with those channel letters. I don't know if you have enough authority to be able to, you know, make that decision and to be able to move forward with the rest of the signage, because as it stands right now, the only things you would be able to do by right is the pylon sign, and I think the unlogoed directional signs per the building commissioner, everything else requires the special permit. Just a thought. I mean, you know, you folks are up to, you know, do whatever you like, but that's just something to consider.
Thank you.
You've been getting up there, see, because you have to be standing right in front of the door.
If, if I, if I may, I, I probably would like to go that direction, because I, we had an issue in another town where this happened, and all of a sudden they were opening with no signs, especially when we have drive-through menu boards that have a lot to do with what's going on. So I guess, I guess if I, if that's going to be allowed, I'd withdraw the north and south for now. The fear I'm getting, I'll let my customer know that you're not really strongly in favor of it, and if I came back, you'd want to see something smaller. I'm not even sure if that's going to be the way to go, so I'd be willing to do that.
Okay. If that's, that's fine with the board, then I'm fine with it. Good? All right. So then my, my next question changes to, what is the pleasure of the board?
Excuse me, one other thing. Make sure you put the number on the pylon sign in your decision here.
So you're going to put a number on this pylon sign, correct?
Correct.
All right.
And now, does it, does it have to be on the sign itself, or can it be on the pole covered down below?
On the pole, that's fine.
So people can see it, as long as you drive by and know what number it is and so forth and so on.
Public safety as well.
Yeah, no, I get it.
All right, so with that, we have a motion to close the public hearing.
Show move.
A motion made in second, motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Ms. Louden, could you just refresh it for the waivers for this?
Sure. So the waivers would be as follows. Striking the two sets of channel letters, we're going to move forward, you folks want to move forward through with an additional drive-through sign on the south side of the building, a 71-inch siren and drive-through sign on the front facade to exceed the allowed square footage per linear foot, and the additional freestanding signs to include illuminated directional sign with business logo, one clearance bar with maximum height sign, one single-panel pre-menu board, one canopy with logo, and one five-panel menu board. And the rest are just conditions.
All right, so.
The directional without the logo.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so those are the, the waivers necessary. Do we have a motion on?
I'd say I'd make a motion to that effect, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so a motion made, we have a second. Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. As to the site, sign special permit itself, the conditions are, one is the, the address on the sign, the front pylon sign. What else did you have as a conditions?
Motion to approve with the conditions.
Yeah, I just want to hear it from Ms. Louden, because she had.
No sign shall be illuminated between the hours of 12:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. unless the business is operational during that time. No signed special permit shall be issued, no sign permit should be issued for a sign without electrical power unless an electrical permit application is filed concurrently by a licensed electrician, and that all freestanding signs must be located within a landscape area equal to 125% of the sign area maintained in perpetuity, and that applies to the pylon sign on the front.
All right, so those, those are our conditions. We have a motion made, do we have a second?
With the conditions.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you. Quick question.
Yes.
Decision, you type it, they sign it next meeting or somewhere in between?
So, after this meeting, probably, you know, first thing tomorrow morning, I will draft the, the decision. I'll send it to you folks for review, just to make sure we have a common understanding of the conditions and waivers set forth, and then I will notify the board that it is ready for signature. They'll review and the chairman will sign, and then we'll move forward. That typically takes between seven and 10 days, 14 days by statute.
Perfect. Folks, have a good night.
Moving on to agenda item E, 623 Main Street. Site plan review and special permit. Do we have a motion to waive the public reading?
Show move.
Motion made, do we have a second? Motion made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous. Once you folks get settled, if you just state your names for the record, the floor is yours.
My name is Al Salas with Eco Auto on 623 Main Street, and.
My name is Michelle Salas, and I'm also with Eco Auto, 623 Main Street.
So today we're sitting in front of the board to talk about climate change, and, in a way, but also changes that are coming to town. We are purchasing, we're purchasing the old Nissan dealership on 623 Main Street, also known as the eyesore of Main Street right now, fortunately. We are bringing, in front of you is our project that we're bringing to life in, at 623 Main Street. Our project at Eco Auto is to bring back, or bring to life, the dealership of the future, meaning a dealership that's sustainable, a dealership that sells only hybrid and electric vehicles, and also distributes charging stations for consumers to use in town. We're going to be doubling the amount of charging stations in town as soon as our project's done, and we want to, in the, in the next two to three years, we want to bring that to a total of 18 charging stations on site. We know that there's a big infrastructure change that are, that is happening in the, in the automotive industry. We've been in the automotive industry for some time and noticed some of those trends, but also we've noticed how little, for the most part, customers or consumers like the buying process of a car. So in our proposal, this project is a consumer-friendly approach of buying vehicles, where a customer's going to be treated with dignity, respect, and also ease of purchasing their, their car, as well as these new technologies that are emerging into the market. Our goal is to lower the three biggest challenges of the, of entering the electric market, which is cost, so we're going to be selling pre-owned electric and hybrid vehicles there. We're also going to be eliminating some of the challenges with servicing electric vehicles, because a lot of people have concerns about this particularly. And our shop, which has 12 bays, we are going to be servicing these electric and hybrid vehicles exclusively as well. I was actually talking to Arthur, the town engineer, and, or he is with engineering department in the town, and he stopped by the side the other day, noticed that the DPW has two Chevy bolts, and we want to offer to, to service those as well. But as far as the site plan, which is what we're here for, we're not changing much. I mean, I hate to make this very anticlimactic after so many presentations about the sites and proposals for the site. What we want to do is, we want to take that site and we want to repurpose, reuse, and recycle as much as what's there as possible. And part of it is because it, first, it's a waste of a beautiful site in a great location, but also it goes along with our business model of being eco-friendly and bringing back to life something that just hasn't been used in a long time. And so we sit in front of you, basically, to ask for your approval on this project, your blessing. We're ready to go. We are, I mean, we don't, short of this, and maybe one more meeting tomorrow, we are ready to wrap this project up, ready to break ground, not break ground really, just tile, and repurpose this, this dealership and make it beautiful again. I actually want to, can't wait to do the lawn.
Make it beautiful for the town. Like that's, uncover the gem that it is.
All right, so, all right, take it to the board members. I'll just sort of note the oddity of the fact that there's already answers from the applicant to all the comments from, they had the town's letter and the engineer. This is about as short a letter as we get from the engineer ever, in terms of any issues with it.
Yeah.
So this is, this is sort of further along in the process than is usual when someone walks in the first time. So I hope no one will be shocked if things do move along. I don't, you know, I can't say for sure. I will also note to any of the members, if they hadn't noticed it, number 13, within that letter, just, you know, if you didn't see it, just take a look at it. And with that, I'll start with Mr. Fowler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was very impressed with this submittal.
Thank you.
And I talked very, to the point with Ms. Louden, and she, I know, not speaking for her, she instilled in me a confidence that you're ready to go.
Thank you.
And it's a pleasure to pick up this package, along with the, the other packages, on Friday, and going through it Saturday and Sunday, to find that you're, you are ready to go. And as Mr., the chair said, the shortest letter from our town engineer that he's ever seen. I agree. Obviously, the work was done before.
Yes, we've put a lot into it.
So that, that makes it easy. Nothing's easy. But we, I appreciate what you've done to this site. We've been trying to get someone to go on this site for half a dozen years, if not more. I personally, normally I say this, when, after you get your approval, welcome to Tuksturi. I'm going to say it now.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, and I as well, some of you may or may not know, but I'm also lead AP and a lifelong builder, and, and I do believe in responsible, energy-efficient, healthy buildings for, for people, and, and I think it's, I think it's great to reuse existing spaces, and for you guys to target that is really, is, is, has a lot of positives on, on, a lot of positives, we'll leave it at that. So I, I just have a couple of quick questions. You know, it's, I was just reading an article, I, I actually forwarded it to, to our planner, about the lack of interest, of charging infrastructure in, in multiple family dwellings, you know? And anytime a project comes by our purview, it's usually never a topic of discussion, although, you know, the cost to install a, the infrastructure for chargers at multifamily dwellings is considerably cheaper during the construction phase than it is to try to retrofit it later on. So that's just something that, that interests me and something maybe we can have a conversation about later on. Because the, the people that live in apartments and condos typically don't have the benefit of, of having access to, to charging ports. So just for my own curiosity, and, and maybe some of the residents, some people might be interested, when you, when somebody plugs into a charger, and it's not at their house, in other words, in other words, I think probably the target buyers for, for electric vehicles are, are people that live in single-family homes, so you can plug into your, you know, get a port in your house and plug it in. But everybody else is left to possibly plug in at, at Walmart or whoever may be providing the. So how do people get charged for that? Like, how do you, who pays for, when you, when you plug your car in, huh, you know?
You're bringing up a very good point, and very interesting. There's a misconception in the marketplace that cleaner driving and cleaner energy is free, and it isn't. So much like you're going to a gas station right now, the way of the future, the way that, that this whole industry is developing, and it is happening so fast, it's going to be that you're going to have essentially a gas station down the street in your parking lot, right? So the way that people get charged right now is, we have market data that shows that 54% of people that buy electric vehicles have, or also buy a charging station for their home, being single-family dwellings. There's, there's actually a whole study by the Fuel Institute of Electric Driving, and it's, it's a whole institute, believe it or not. But it's a 40-page paper that I really enjoy, because it talks about the entire demographics of charging stations and how, how you, how people charge their cars currently. That leaves with another 46% of people that need this infrastructure, and they're doing it through applications where our connecting like ChargePoint. There's also Electrify America is a fund that was, if you remember Diesel Gate by Volkswagen, when they were doing the advertising with the, the false advertisement for, for diesel. Part of their settlement is, there was, there was a $3 billion fund set up to electrify America. And that is, that was a, part of that fund, there was a, a company that was formed to subsidize the charging stations as well as this type of infrastructure. So people are paying for it retail, they're paying it through applications, some of it is subsidized by local businesses as well. And in particular, to your personal interest, as far as charging stations in multifamily dwellings, part of our plan as well is to distribute these charging stations. So maybe we can talk about that.
Very good. Thank you for that. And, and I just have really kind of one more question, just kind of a, a housekeeping-type thing. You know, I think I read somewhere that charging batteries, as they're charging, the battery's off-gas a certain chemical or something, and maybe you could just tell me a little bit about that, and, and did, did the spaces need to be ventilated? Like, like if you're charging a fork truck, for example, there is a certain off-gassing of, of some type of material from the battery that needs to be addressed. You can't do it in a very closed-in area.
So to our understanding, and based on our research regarding charging stations, because the charging stations, there's, there's levels of charging stations. There's level ones through three. Level ones being, they're rated by how fast they charge. Level one being a charging station that takes you, on average, six to eight hours to charge an average vehicle 200 to 300 miles. A level-two charging station, which is a slightly faster charging station, this is the charging station that's going to allow you to charge your vehicles between the two to three hours. And then there's a level, level-three charging station, that's also known as the supercharger, and that's all you kind of hear about as far as getting half a charge in 30 minutes. When you have, I mean, I'm not a chemist, by any means, but what I can speak to is, is that charging a battery is a chemical reaction, and it's, you're, you're storing energy for the use of it later on. So there may be fumes that, that are generated, but to our knowledge, in, based on the fact that these charging stations are installed in closed quarters, in garages, and in family homes, and they're safety-tested, there isn't, it's not anything that's.
Imminent danger.
Imminent danger or lethal or anything like that. I mean, you, you have a charging station underneath your garage, that's kind of how the future is spinning out here.
Well, thank you for that, and I'd just like to echo my, my fellow board member, Mr. Fowler, and I, I am definitely in support of, of moving forward with your project as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Patel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just had a couple of questions, and one is the location of the dumpster. Is that definite there? It just seems like you might have access, truck access in and out of that location for emptying and putting the dumpster back.
So we, which plans are you, so yeah, so we do have, so we can put it further back. However, if you, as part of the site and as part of keeping everything as, as it sits without having to add more impervious surfaces onto site, there is a stormwater removal system that is actually owned by, and monitored and maintained by the town. And there's a lot of drainage there. So getting into the impervious surfaces and it just will pose a big challenge, both for us and for the town.
I'm trying not to block the trucks from going in that are the easement.
So if you take a look at the site plan, if we put that dumpster anywhere more behind the area, it would be very hard for that truck to turn around. And also, if you, if we put it because of the islands that are in the, in the middle of the parking lot.
Yeah.
Also, if we put it up in the corner, it might interfere up in the back in the corner. It will interfere with our lot storage. It would also interfere, especially with snow removal, because that's where we're gonna put our snow storage.
Well, I see the plan here, the snow storage is up in this corner, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what the corner I was referring to.
Yes.
If we put it back there.
Well, anywhere in the back there, if you, I'm just thinking if you have access for a truck coming in and out.
Fine.
Where it goes, I don't care. I'm just trying to prevent an issue for you down the road with a truck not being able to get in there because of the island.
Got it, got it.
Okay, so.
So where it's proposed, we can change it. It's not, I mean, anything's movable. But the reason why we put it there is because we thought it would be, it's gonna be caged. And so we thought it would be easy for a truck to come in, pull in,
Okay.
pick it up, and just back up right into our side, the lot in between the building and the water there.
Yeah.
Back up and
That's all pocket lock here, correct?
So
Just shy, yeah?
Yes.
Correct, yes.
Okay. All right. Just trying to avoid you having a problem down the road, but I mean, you can be moved, I'm sure, a couple of feet of the way, truck gets in.
We'll take, we'll take a look at it.
You have to do one favor for me is eliminate the eyesore that's down there presently on the, on the main street, is all the overgrowth that's there. It goes all through the site, so.
So we've been, it will be addressed. We finally got permission by, by, because of things that we've been doing, but the property will be signed over to us very soon. This is, it won't happen again. I'm a golfer. That's a big deal to me. Like, it's, it's just not okay.
I agree. Well, I don't like it because as you drive down Main Street, you see the eyesore.
Yes.
Nissan's been like that for a long time, trying to keep on top of it to get it cleaned up. But it's just, if you could do that, that'd be a great start, for sure.
Definitely.
So my last question, and I'll let you go, is any plans for solar on the roof?
Plans, yes. Not these plans.
No, I know. Down the road, I mean, I had an idea, you guys are doing
So yeah, so there's a couple of plans that we have down the road. One being solar on the roof. The other one is a solar charging port. There's, there's so much opportunity in this market that we want to bring to the town and we want to bring to the marketplace. But again, it's, we want to keep as much of it as possible. The whole goal is get to market, show that this works, show that this is the way forward. And once we have that, then we can build from it. But, but we're very much one step at a time type of people.
Do you own the white fence?
Yes.
Okay. So that's gonna be maintained?
Yes.
Very much so.
No problem.
Maintain, fix, power washed.
Yeah.
All of that.
Perfect. I'll say it, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
So, you know, most of the other members have already commented, but I mean, just make the note, you know, Cookspurrie's a green community. I made it a point to have things put into the new zoning bylaw that go along with green initiatives, considerations when projects come in. Setting aside the fact that we've always been interested in landscaping for all the projects. So all of that sort of finds itself in this project.
Thank you.
And it is relatively centrally located in the town. So, you know, if nothing else, it shows sort of a combination of the, the way the town has sought to move in that direction. And now it's the town seeing a business coming into town that's doing the same. So for those reasons, I can certainly get behind what's here. I think it's also a benefit to us as a town that, and I think Mr. Fowler sort of alluded to it, one of the reasons why this is so far along in the process is that you're basically doing what was there before, you're just doing the green version of it.
Yes.
So, you know, we're not taking this piece of property and having somebody come in and propose, you know, 40 housing units. I mean, that'd be a complete change to the site and require something different from us in looking at it than the fact that you're really just sort of recycling, which is nice for you, recycling a property for a purpose that already was useful, which is, you know, makes things a lot simpler for everybody, which again connects to the engineer's comment, which weren't really anything because he's looking at what he's already seen. So the exception of the name changes and what you'll do, there isn't a whole lot different, other than it becomes active again, which is a benefit to the town.
Oh, we'll pay taxes.
Like I said, active. So with that, I'll open it up to the audience. Any questions, comments, or concerns from anybody in the audience? Seeing none, bring it back to the board, and I'll move over to Ms. Lauer, because she's got something.
Don't I always? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if the board were to move forward with any kind of special permit and site plan review, so those will be two separate pieces. Any conditions that the board would like to implement or any waivers to grant, by my count, there would only be two waivers that you folks would have to consider. One would be a reduction in the amount of snow storage, because the snow storage is directly correlated to the amount of acreage on the site. You know, a considerable amount of it is a detention pond and some paved area, as noted on the plan, that is to house an inventory of 109 vehicles. And in speaking with the applicants, it doesn't sound like they have the intention to utilize that entirely for vehicle storage. So I think it would be an appropriate waiver to grant that area to be snow storage and reduce it from the, where did it go? They required 11,350 square feet to 5,000 square feet, if that is something that the board would like to do. And the other waiver to consider would be the, the requirement of bike racks. The applicant in an email to me late on Friday asked for a waiver for that due to traffic conditions. Again, that is the, the pleasure of the board. And any conditions would be any type of performance guarantee. And the ones that I noted as proposed in number, item number one in my letter to the board, none of those, all of those, anything like that. But if you folks want to set hours of operation, how many vehicles may be shown outside of the building, how many should be inside of the building. I actually was looking at the old Nissan special permit to see what kind of conditions were implemented at that point. No test driving on side streets, main street only, perimeter and light, site lightings off after closing, et cetera. So any kind of conditions you folks want to implement, and then the two waivers for, for consideration.
Okay. All right. So, all right, before I close it out, why don't we just go through that, that way, if the applicants have to comment at all. The waivers, I think, are pretty straightforward. Anybody have any issue with those waivers? Nope, we do them?
Nope.
Okay. And then as far as the performance guarantee, is there
Because it is not a ground-up development, it's not required. It's something you guys may want to do to ensure the as-built submitted at the end of the project, like any other development. But again, it's totally up to you guys.
What's the, what's the minimum we put for something this far?
I mean, I think 10,000 would be reasonable. I think a ground-up would be 20 or 30, just because of all of the, all the utilities already exist here. So it's not like the town engineer is gonna be looking for location of sewer lines, water mains, and things like that.
So and then from yours, you just said no test drives and side streets. Did you have a number for vehicles from?
I did not.
There was no number?
No.
I'm not gonna worry about that. What, maybe I'd suggest then that we just leave it as a, that the board can review it going forward?
Sure.
That way, if it turns out that there's some issue, we can just take it up then?
Sure.
So that would be vehicle display.
And you don't have to worry about any cars inside. We will not be displaying any vehicles inside.
Okay.
All right. Anything else? Was there another one, Ms. Lauer, that you said that I missed? The no test drive side streets?
No test driving on side streets and perimeter and site lightings to turn off after close of operations and any proposed hours of operations. I have, did not ask the applicant specifically what they were considering for hours of operation, but perhaps that discussion could have right, happen right now.
Do you know?
Yep. Monday through Friday, nine to eight. And then Saturdays, nine to five, closed on Sundays.
Pretty straightforward.
All right. So if we do the motion, we'll incorporate those four, the no, no test side street, no test drive side streets, vehicle display, the board can review going forward. We won't place a limit at this time. The perimeter lighting to be shut off after the hours of operation. And the hours as of now, Monday through Friday, nine to eight, Saturday, nine to five, and Sunday closed. Okay. All right. So obviously, if you have any issue with those, you can come back and see it probably as a non-substantial change, if necessary. All right. So those are, if we do that. But I will now see what the pleasure of the board is.
Motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close, or a second? Motion made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. As to the, should we just take the site plan review first? All right. So do we have a motion on the site plan review approval?
So moved with the conditions as applied.
Second.
All right. So motion made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. As to the special permit, through the waivers first. So the waivers, we have the reduction in snow storage to 5,000. And the other is the waiver for the bike racks. So we have a motion on the waivers?
So moved.
Motion made, uh, we have second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. As to the site, I'm trying to say the special permit.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before I forget, I don't see on the plan, on the pylon, a street number.
All right. We'll add that to the conditions.
Okay.
All right. So we have the conditions that we listed before.
Yep.
We'll add to that, the, the address for the property to be on the pylon sign.
Well, 10,000 dollar bond?
Yeah, no, those are the ones we already got. So we're incorporating those that we just discussed. And then in addition, any of the notations on the, the letter in which updates and whatnot need to be made on the plans, that those will be made and submitted to the, to the Community Development Department. Some of the, you know, they're listed in here, we'll just incorporate them. All right. So that is our motion.
Hello?
All right. We have to have the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you.
Again, welcome to Cookspurrie. We hope to make the town very proud.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like what? All right. Moving on to agenda item F, 30 Commerce Way. We've got site plan review, land disturbance permit, special permit, and this is continued from our June 27th meeting.
I know.
I know. Well, especially after those other times. All right. Once everybody gets settled, just state your names for the record, the floor will be yours.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Christine Hong of Reemer Bronstein, attorney for the applicant. With me tonight, I'm Tyler Murphy.
Hello.
With me, that was scary. With me tonight, I have Tyler Murphy from Rhino Capital, Greg Debona, our site civil engineer from Buller Engineering, and Dan Dumas, our traffic engineer from MDM. At the last hearing, we opened and presented our site plan as well as our traffic presentation. And they, from that, there were some questions that, that came up. We are back here tonight with answers to those questions. In addition, late last week, we submitted revised plans. And I understand, we understand that the board hasn't had the time nor the opportunity to review such revised plans. But in order to facilitate your review, we're here to present and walk you through the visions that we've made. And then lastly, we, since the last hearing, we've met with the town engineer. He had comments, some department comments. We've met with him. He was there to witness some of the test pits. And as far as, to my knowledge, he's, you know, he's okay with, and we provided answers to a lot of, all of his department comments. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Tyler Murphy. He is going to walk you through the agenda, and then we'll continue on with our presentation.
Thanks, Christine. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Tyler Murphy. I'm the project applicant with Rhino Capital. So just to go over quickly the agenda we have here, I'm just gonna kind of take a couple minutes just to reorientate us with the site. These are the same slides you saw from last time, one and two. There's a request from the board that we place traffic kind of all together, so it can be addressed separately if needed. So slides three through seven will do that. Dan will be going through that. Slides eight through 12 are all site-oriented, which Greg will be going through. And essentially, we're just going through all the comments that were received and the changes that were made to the plan, as Christine said, to facilitate the review. And then slide 12, this was something that was presented to the lieutenant at the IDR meeting, but was not included on our last presentation, so we did want to include it here. Next slide, please. An overview of communications since our last planning board hearing on 6/27. As Christine mentioned, on July 7th, we did have the infield soil testing done. So there are additional soil logs that have been updated in the stormwater management report. On 7/13, there was going to be a conservation hearing, but there's an item that requires a site visit that we're still working on scheduling, so we did not attend. On 7/14, as Christine mentioned, there was a submission for comments and plan revisions. And then 7/18, again, we're just gonna be going through those here. The existing site conditions, 11.7 acres, the entirety of the site is zone industrial one, and it's sparsely forested. There's debris scattered throughout the site as well as in embedded in the top soils, we've seen in our soil logs. Next slide, please. So this image is basically the exact same as you saw last time with the same zoning table, but the addition of four spaces there in the plan bottom left had been added. We are going to be getting into more detail about that later on in Greg's slides. Just to clarify, there were a couple of questions regarding setbacks and distances from the residential zone. So the building itself, its nearest point is 145, and kind of slopes towards 180 at the bottom of the plan there. And then taking the building out of it, just looking at the vegetated buffer, you're basically, its nearest point is 75 up to 150 feet. And as you can see, as the plan slopes, that's kind of going plan top left to plan bottom. And that's just to the residential zone line, not to any other structures. With that, Dan, the next slide's traffic, so I'll turn that over to you.
Sure. Good evening. Dan Dumay from MDM, senior project manager. You guys saw an overview of traffic at the last meeting, so this first slide is just a quick recap. We studied the intersections of Main Street, Old Main, kind of the gateway intersection, and then the site driveway were the two key points. Traffic generation for this project is nominal, 16 or fewer peak hour trips. Our study did account for seasonal adjustment to February counts to minimum to average season, as well as a pandemic adjustment to pre-pandemic conditions, which may or may not fully ever come back. But we adjusted 22% in the morning, 15% in the afternoon. A review of the crash history at these locations listed that none of them are high crash locations, below average crash rates at both. The project with the minimal traffic increases is adequate capacity at the key intersections, notably the signalized intersection, with no change from the no-build conditions without the project to with the project. Overall, that intersection will continue to operate level service B or better, with the side street Old Main operating D or better, which is very adequate. We looked at the maneuverability of the WB50 tractor trailer through that Main Street intersection, that'll come up in the next slide. And key findings that the incremental traffic associated with the proposed development is not going to materially impact operating conditions at the study intersections along Main Street at the site intersection. Move to the next slide, please. So, let's see if this plan works here. So this one on the left is a WB50 coming in from the 495 side, a left end. You can see there's no encroachment into the oncoming exiting lane of Old Main Street. Adequately you can make around that corner without impact to curb line or adjacent street. The one on the right here is the exiting movement for that same vehicle making a right turn. right turn, it can stay within its own lane, and then exit onto, uh, the exit lanes onto, um, Main Street towards 495. This is the predominant movement, um, think all of our trucks are going to go to and from the site, are going to use this movement. The, uh, next slide is going to show you, uh, we did also look at the ability for a truck on the, it's on the right side here, this is the truck going in, uh, so it does need encroachment, can stand its own side, its own, um, outbound lanes towards 495, but it does have to encroach slightly into the Old Main Street traffic there. We don't expect our trucks to do it, it can do it with encroachment. Um, we didn't actually count or see any, uh, of these large vehicles actually doing this, and then coming back out's no problem at all, it can stay within its lane and go back out. Um, so it is feasible, it's within the design standards of mass DOT, and we don't really expect this to happen, uh, but you can queue a couple vehicles, um, from the stop bar and still make this movement if it was required. So, there's a question on the traffic signal timing at the intersection, so we contacted mass DOT, we got the signal permit plan for the intersection. It's actuated coordinated intersection, so this intersection is coordinated with the Walmart signal, this intersection, as well as the two 495 ramp, um, intersections. Um, it is actuated on the side streets, so Old Main Street, uh, can go up to, uh, I believe 22 seconds of green time, up or down as needed. It processes the time adequately through our analysis. Um, there's no necessary adjustments needed to achieve optimal timing, there's plenty of capacity out there. What actually happens is the, most of the cycles, you'll get a couple vehicles, then it'll, it'll clear them out, um, 10 to 15 seconds. What people may experience at times, it is coordinated, so any unused time from that side street is going to get dumped back onto the main road, and during the, the peak hours, it holds a 90-second cycle length, which is a minute and a half. So if you get any of the phases, the left turn onto, uh, Old Main or the, the vehicles exiting, if that's not used, again, it's going to stay on the Main Street. So you may show up there, you have to sit for a while, but, but once it processes it, that's how mass DOT is prioritized, 38 is the main, um, traffic movement, so that's operating, um, adequately. And then the, the emergency preemption is provided at the intersection, so, um, you'll see if an emergency vehicle comes through, it'll stop whatever movements are happening and prioritize, uh, that movement. There's also out there, and the pedestrian signals are working adequately with a countdown, uh, for those movements as well. And then for the vehicle queuing, the, the question came up, if, um, if queuing goes from the intersection past and impacts, uh, Troll Road, there's about 18 cars back, um, from the signal. Our experience is about four or five cars is, is, is normal on average, and we see how typically can extend back 95th queue, about 10 vehicles, just about halfway to that intersection, probably around where the, um, the tire shop is. Um, you may see occasional backups beyond that, like I said, if, if there's, if there's no movements on that intersection, um, it'll kind of, you have to wait there for the next 90-second cycle to come around, but in general, 10 cars is about the maximum, uh, queue that we saw. And occasional backups, it, it may ha- happen occasionally, and it's probably due to some preemption of emergency vehicles, so it may have gone through an entire cycle, it's, it's back to the 10 vehicles, then an emergency vehicle comes from the highway or two towards the highway into one of the plazas down there. Um, and it would basically be like two cycle lengths of cars, but it quickly revert back to normal operations once that cleared. Um, the applicant, the last bullet here, is proposing a condition to monitor, uh, operations at that intersection, um, 18 months after stabilization of the site, uh, to verify the projections and just to give the board, um, peace of mind that it's operating as I'll pass it on to the next.
Uh, okay, uh, Greg DeBona here with Bowler, good to see everybody again. Um, really happy with the plan progress made over the past couple of weeks. Uh, we made sure to address all the, uh, comments and recommendations in both the planner and engineer's review letter, uh, so I'm going to quickly just walk through some of the changes that really you would actually be able to visualize on site. A lot of the other comments were kind of more administrative in nature, um, and, uh, but we still addressed them, but isn't something you would visually see on the plans. Uh, so the first, uh, site change is the addition of four more parking spaces. Uh, again, this would get us up to the 62 parking spaces, which, which does represent the 30% reduction, uh, that may be, um, permitted. The, um, we are still calling them out as, as banked parking spaces in the intent that, uh, we know they can fit, uh, they can be installed with, uh, at create flush curb situation, so the area behind it would still be, uh, utilized for snow storage, uh, and snow stockpiling, uh, but based on our prior, uh, discussions and anticipated use, we, we actually don't think we need to build those up front, so we're, we're showing you that they can be built, but asking to, uh, show them in a banked nature. Uh, directly adjacent to that, we show, uh, a space for a concrete bike pad. Um, this was just something that we had left off in the original submission, but we have no problem adding a bike pad onto the site. Uh, as far as lighting goes, there was a recommendation about, uh, evaluating the need for, uh, lighting, uh, at all times, especially in the back of the site. Um, as we mentioned at the last meeting, that whole rear perimeter driveway is really just intended for emergency access flow any, anyway. Uh, we have gates on either end, which would, uh, really prohibit any truck circulation, uh, or just employee circulation, uh, except for an emergency type situation. So, uh, for us, the entire back of the site there was actually being illuminated from wall packs, um, that were mounted on the building. So instead, what we did is everything in the, on that, in the red, like rev revision cloud that circulates around the back of the building, that entire edge is now being put on, um, motion activated lights. So again, uh, if, if it's, somebody walks out an egress door, uh, so basically, uh, human can activate the light, a vehicle can activate the light, um, but small animals and stuff like that will not trigger the motion sensor. And then the lights are the exact same lights that we modeled, uh, the first time, so it's not a change in light, it's just an activation of when they actually come on. Um, just a couple highlights, um, of just some of the planned changes that were initiated based on comments received from the planner's letter. Um, we did add the four banked parking spaces as, as noted, we added the bike rack, um, and then also, we, we don't have a tenant yet, and we don't have any proposed tenant signage, but to make sure that in the future, you don't have a tenant come in with an application that doesn't make, um, really doesn't comply with the allowable, uh, conditions, we made sure to add the compliance chart onto our plans, it's spelled out word for word exactly what's in the ordinance, in terms of what is allowable signage. So later on, we can take this plan to a tenant and say, here's your allowable signage. Uh, and then as far as, uh, the engineer's review letter, uh, items that actually related to more site features, uh, this is a little bit more utility in, uh, in nature, but there was a hot box, which is basically, uh, an above ground, uh, meter box, uh, and backflow preventer that we showed on our plans. After discussion, um, we understand that really those are preferred to be inside the building, so we've agreed to remove the hot box and put them inside the building. Um, we did make modifications to our gas and water in terms of how they were depicted, just to make sure that we had, uh, proper separation and that it wasn't confused about being installed in the same trench. Uh, we also, actually, it's not listed here, but we also made some modifications to the separation of the water and sewer, same, same approach, make sure there's adequate space and separation, um, so nobody, um, we, we're not within a, in 10 feet of each other. Uh, we did have the soil testing, and it went very well, it replicated everything we had done in our initial tests that we did alone, um, so still seeing really good soil conditions out there, good infiltration rate, uh, good sandy soil, so. Um, and those logs have now been included in our, our revised stormwater report, which just went back in last week. Um, we did modify the plan just to add hatching, so that the delineation of where heavy duty pavement and standard duty pavement was a little more clear. So again, just more of a construction, uh, detail, but, uh, it's now been addressed on the plans. And the, uh, accessible parking stalls and signage were, uh, more clearly called out, we had them on, in details, but it wasn't really labeled with exact dimensions and signage on the layout plan. We have now corrected that and, uh, put that on the drawings. And, and all the other comments, we did have, um, discussions over the past two weeks to make sure that we addressed everything that was in the original review letter, with our intention to be able to have a very, um, very limited outstanding comments that when we come back in August, we can say that all the letter comments have been addressed. Uh, this, this is the, uh, fire truck maneuverability diagram, so this is the fire truck that we actually got, um, from, from the fire marshal in terms of the dimensions and the, uh, turning radii, uh, that is used. Uh, we did model it as it comes in, uh, basically sending the truck around in a, um, clockwise direction, and the reason we did that is actually that was a little bit more restrictive in terms of turning movements, when we go around in the counterclockwise direction, it works even easier. Um, but it's just showing that a fire truck can easily maneuver around the site, uh, no issues with, uh, clearance paths or, uh, curb alignment. And, um, this, this was submitted with our initial application, but we didn't, we just left it out of our first, uh, presentation, and we felt it'd be worthwhile to bring it up now, uh, just to make sure everybody sees it. And, uh, yeah, that's, that's, that's really it as far as site changes. I know there wasn't a lot, uh, adjusted, but we just felt like this was a nice milestone to come in, show you the progress being made, uh, and make sure that if there's any further comments or suggestions, we're well ahead of it before coming back in on August 22nd.
All right, very good. Uh, we'll start with Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, um, folks for, um, expeditiously responding to, um, you know, to our concerns and Tooksbury's concerns and the residents' concerns as far as the, the, uh, traffic impact primarily there. I'm sure, I'm sure that, uh, we all appreciate that, and thank you for addressing the, the light trespass issue as well. It looks like that you guys have covered all the bases that I can see, and, and, and I have no, really, no further comment.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fowler.
Likewise, I thought the, uh, the presentation really took care of everything that we talked about before, excuse me, and, uh, I'm very pleased with this. Be interesting to hear what the residents have to say, uh, hopefully they're satisfied too. Thank you.
Mr. Fattaya.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So are there any issues left with Mr. Mr. Hardeman?
No, uh, no, nothing outstanding.
How about with the fire truck you showed us? Is, is the snow storage going to block a fire truck from going around?
No, all, all the snow storage areas that we have, uh, rev clouded on the site plan are all actually pushed behind the curb area, so none of them will be in the driveway, including even the rear perimeter emergency access road.
Yeah, okay.
We're not using any of that for snow storage.
Good. Uh, what we do require is when we do signage, is having the address on the sign, just so you know that.
Understood.
With that, I'm also Mr. Chairman.
All right, uh, I am as well. So obviously, there's, there's plans in with the town engineer, so hopefully, if, if everything is as you say, and it's done, then by the next meeting, we'll have his, um, sign offs on that, and we'll see where we are then. Um, otherwise, I will open it up to the audience, anyone in the audience who have any questions, comments, or concerns, please come up, state your name and your address, the floor is yours.
Hello? Thank you, uh, my name is Tony Sacara, I live at 232 Old Main Street in Tooksbury. Uh, it's right on the road, been here for 19 years. Um, I do have a letter, I'm not going to read through it at time, I'm just going to highlight it, I do have a letter from a tenant in that area who has probably more trucks on the road combined of all the businesses, and he has 30 years of experience, he can't fathom any more traffic on that road. They come to a slow crawl if they're crisscrossing two tractor trailers, all right? And when it snows, imagine a plot, you, you probably losing three feet on either side, all right? Now, I saw the picture, I also have 16 years in trash removal, so I deal with 200 trucks on a daily basis. I love the pictures you did out there, there's only one problem, there were no cars on the road. When was that picture taken, on a Sunday? Did you see what that building is on the far right? It's a daycare center. Knowledge beginnings, do you know how busy that, that building is in the morning, during the day, in the afternoon? Daycare center. Then at the end of the road, you know what's on that road? Batting cages, and those things crank out parents and kids going in and out. There's not enough room for two tractor trailers to go side, if they do, it comes to a snow crawl. And what do I have to do to get by? Probably go in somebody's lawn, probably go a little, on, 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 on another piece of property. To me, it's a safety. Now, concerning that turn, I deal with architects on a daily basis, they come to me, Tony, can that truck, truck fit in there? Wh- what do they do? They get on their website, they get all the websites and get all these turning radiuses, all right? They get on the website to see how big the truck is, how big the fire truck is. Then I come in on that Zoom meeting and I go, what's the height of the loading dock? Oh, 14 feet. Do you know what compactor in the truck is, 13.6? We didn't know that. To get this information on a website, uh, there's no way, if he's coming from Walmart on a tractor trailer, if he's going, Mr. Johnson, you were adamant during the whole time today on a couple, especially at the car wash, adamant on traffic, traffic, traffic. If he's coming past that Walmart to take a right turn, he closes that whole street up. He has to take a far right, and everybody does come out of Kendra Care, Town Fiat Tire, way backed up, way backed up, because he has to make that turn, all right? Maybe if he's coming for 495, you can make that, they kill that curb every time they come down that street, all right? Box drop, but not a tractor trailer. Those pictures had no cars on the street. Nice graphics, easy in and out, but no cars on the street, nothing realistic. And that Kendra Care, there was nobody, nobody in that parking lot. You kidding, Kendra Care is jammed every single day. That picture was taken on a Sunday where it's easy in and out. I'm sorry, it's not safe for more traffic, and there's no way, they creep, they come to a slow crawl, and in the wintertime, it's going to be worse. We know how they plow on that street. See, you're going to lose three feet or five feet on either side, that's a given, and it happens every winter. I've been here 19 years, all right? I'm 16 years also in the trash removal business. All that information was taken off a website, realistically. Get on a truck, get on an 18 truck, and make that turn during the day when we have ongoing traffic. That, that picture is not realistic, all right? Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Who, who get to you?
Dale Stone, 46 Troll Road. Well, when I was here last meeting, they said, I kept repeating myself that people weren't notified. Well, I received the list of people that were notified, and I mentioned it to the secretary, that the people that are on Old Main Street.
You mentioned it to who?
To the chairperson, were you the chairperson at the last meeting, or?
Yep.
Yeah, you kept telling me, you keep repeating yourself, you keep repeating yourself. I have the list.
No, no, I'm sorry, you just said a second, no, you spoke to somebody, a secretary. Who, who was the secretary?
After I received the list of who was mailed, the, um, letters, and actually, I forgot, I had to sign for my letter. And you said, well, maybe they threw it away, and maybe they didn't read it, and, well, these people didn't get the letter, they had no, nobody gave them a letter to sign, no posting.
Right, but what I was asking you is, you said you spoke to a secretary.
I spoke to her after the meeting.
Do you mean the town planner?
Pardon me?
Do you mean the town planner?
Uh, well, I don't know, yes, I did speak to her.
Okay, so that's the town planner, not a secretary, though.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make sure we're clear.
Oh, okay, well, I'm, I didn't see the, uh, know the, whatever it is. But anyway, um, on that list, these people's names were not listed, they never did receive a notice of the meeting.
Okay, I, I've already gone over this with, last time, and I've gone over with the town planner again. The notices went out. The one you're signing for, I believe you probably got from the Conservation Commission, not us. It doesn't have anything to do with our hearing. So you may have signed for a letter from the Conservation Commission.
I thought it was for this meeting, for that meeting.
You may think that, but the ones we're sending out wouldn't have required signatures, so it couldn't have been from us.
All right, but they, they never received them.
Again, I, I'm not going to keep going over and over again.
I'm just saying.
The notices went out, if you say you didn't get them, I'm not going to dispute whether you did or didn't, I'm just going to tell you that from the end that it matters, where they come out from, they went out.
All right, well, I still think it's out of compliance, because I, I don't know, I thought I.
We can keep going back and forth, but at this point.
All right, that's, all right, that's the other. And the next one I have is, um, on that turn going on from Old Main to 38, um, did anybody ever try to see if they would make that a little bit wider, so the cars, it, it, does anybody remember anybody trying to make that with the state?
I couldn't say. I have no idea if anybody's approached. I have no idea if anybody's approached.
Yeah, I know, you could probably look into that because the state would not allow the hairpin turn to be changed. They would not allow it. Now, I got that from one of the neighbors, Mr. Lewis on Old Main Street. He couldn't be here tonight, but he wanted me to let you know that that was the case. So there is no way on that street, have any of you men ever sat out there and looked at the traffic? I mean, and just observed what went on there? Last Sunday, I was going to church. There was a red light coming down the hill. I had the green light. Two cars swung right by that light. It happens all the time, believe me. I'm on that road all the time. I'm always going out to 38. And as far as Trail Road, 18, no. Do you know Saturday? Trail Road was like Main Street on both directions. Where were they going? Were they going cutting through to get to Lowell? Cutting through to go into the other end of the highway on the, near Cracker Barrel? I don't, it's like a highway there. What happened? Does anybody know? Where is this traffic coming from? It's a big question in this town and I'm not the only one that complains about the traffic. You just complained about the other end of town. Yes, that's right. It's terrible there. And it's also 100% worse where we are because of the lights and because nobody pays attention. And if you don't stop and look and when that light turns green and if you don't look both ways and wait, you're going to get killed, believe me. Somebody almost did not too long ago. So I, I don't understand, you know, it's an old, old road. There's a lot of car, there's a lot of trucks there now. I don't see how it can handle any more trucks and especially tractor trailer trucks. Are you kidding me? I don't know. I'm sorry, but things have to change in this town because it's getting too crowded, traffic, nobody's doing anything about it. Trash everywhere. Every day I'm picking up trash. And like Mr. Fattaya said, coming up the street to Tucksbury, it's not a very pretty site because there's trash everywhere.
Thank you.
So please take the trucks into consideration. I have a.
You got to stay at the mic if you're still talking.
I have a drive-through. I'd have them take their little trucks and, and go around and are busy 5:00 at night, 2:00 in the afternoon. I don't care where you go. Try to get those tractor trailer trucks around and up the hill and see if that was right. It was not right. I agree with my other neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, I think you were next.
You can hold it. Okay.
Yeah, it's okay. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Julius Kamau and I'm a resident of 59 Trail Road. So basically this project will hit me right into my face. My concerns relates to the height of the building. The height of the building, I don't know if you, any of you have been to the site, but it's at an elevated gradient while the residential, especially as you, as you go towards the bridge that passes over from Trail Road to over 495, those residential areas, they're kind of low. So I was looking at whatever they are putting as a barrier, you know, to demarcate between whatever structure they are proposing to build. And I think it's, they said it's a loan, they're going to put a loan. So I, my request to the town is for them to put up at least a nevergreen. You know, it would be nice when you're relaxing in your backyard not to have someone picking over you. So, I mean, that's not a very unreasonable request to request on that border as they come towards.
Hold on, I want to clarify that because I don't, I forget which, were you the one who commented on the, what was being left for?
Yes.
Could you do that again? Because I don't think, you weren't at the last hearing, right?
Excuse me?
You weren't at the last hearing, were you?
I wasn't here. Unfortunately, I was traveling. I wish I was here for that.
I think this is where you mentioned it though, was last time. I don't think you mentioned it today. So could you discuss?
Sure.
So that might answer his question before he continues?
Yeah, sure.
That way, you know what I mean?
Sure.
If you can get the answer.
We can just go forward.
Sorry, I'm getting back to the color. Does this help, Tom?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't even know you were controlling it. So I'll just go over the grade and then I'll talk about the landscape offer. So I'll just go one to the other if that's okay. So from plan bottom left, I'm just staying on the left side of the plate, so plan bottom left to plan top left. Essentially what's happening with the grade there is it is high on the bottom left side and then it slopes down as you get further to the back there.
Towards the marshlands, right?
Say it again.
Towards the marsh. It's a little bit of a marshland.
That's exactly correct. If we talk about the whole site moving away from that line, really the site is sloping bottom left to top right. That's, that's the gradient here. So it sort of follows the same thing along that line that we've been talking about. The barrier that you're referring to, that's a retaining wall. So it varies and Greg, please correct if we're on between four and six feet in height.
Yeah, at, at the very highest point, it gets even a little bit higher. I think it's closer to about eight feet. On, on that front corner where you see the, the shade trees, those three trees in the lawn, that area there, that's actually sitting eight feet lower than all the surrounding vegetation that's up higher.
Yeah, but the part you're referring to is toward the marshlands. Do you see why you have the snow? You're going to be dumping the snow and you are proposing to build, I think, four parking lots?
Yes.
So that side, if you look at that side going towards the other side from the plans I took from the town side, that's where we have the residencies, right?
Yeah, the, the property to the north does abut further residential backyards to, to the top of the page if we were to keep going beyond the back of the building and beyond the basin area.
Excuse me. So we're all on the same page. Does anybody here have a pointer?
Makes sense. Yeah, I think they had a black highlighter.
Everybody understands what we're talking about. Please.
Thank you.
How do you push it? Got it? Yep.
Thank you.
Great, go for it. Yeah, yeah, why not?
So as, as I'm looking at the, this is really the highest point on the site, which is what I would call like the, basically the southwest corner. And these, these trees that you see up here, that's, that's still part of our, the property, but that's all existing vegetation that won't be disturbed.
Okay.
So those are all the trees that will remain on site. We're going to do a cut wall in here, which means we are basically pulling a large manufactured block that we're going to set in place so that we can lower the site. We're actually bringing the grade down from where it's at today. So that the building, even though the building is going to be, I think it was 40 feet in height, it's actually going to be sitting lower than that in terms of the periphery use because we're, we're setting the whole grade down 10 feet lower than where it's at today. So really, in, in perspective, it's going to feel like it's about 30 feet tall. But the, the site does slope to the, let's call it the north property edge, where this is the lowest portion of the site. And it does, for all of us, most of the drainage does come to the back, to the wetland area behind the, behind the site.
Okay.
And, and again, this, this portion of the building, really you're looking at a lot of solid, solid siding of a building and you have an access road that is blocked except for emergency egress. So you, you won't have any truck circulation or employee cars or anybody coming to the back of the site. All the loading operation takes place here in that, in, well, it's a concrete area, that's why it's a different color. But all your truck loading takes place here and really the rest of this whole building, and there's even a screen wall here, acts as the buffer to any of that activity in, where the truck loading would take place and the circulation. So the trucks come in the driveway, they move around, they load and they come back out the same way. So none of that activity happens at the back of the site. We do have a couple, I think it was around 32 shade trees that we're putting back in this area along our access road. And there is some grading, there is grading that takes place back here and we do have a stormwater management basin. But what, what's not shown here is that there is a, a lot of existing vegetation on these lots to the north of us and it's not our property.
Yeah, but that's not even the residential area, I believe. The residential is more towards the other side where you have the parking lot, the 21 spaces I see over there that's adjacent to the residential area.
That's correct. So these, these 21, these 21 employee parking spaces right here, they're actually going to be really set back at, at grade with that wall.
Okay.
So, so this is again, if you're looking from the residential, the wooded site through the woods, this is all going to be lower.
Okay.
So it's like looking down. You would, you would potentially be able to see, you know, maybe the roof, the roof and the, the second story type feature of the building, it's, in terms of the height.
Yeah.
But you're not going to be able to see the ground activity because of the way the grade works there.
Another question I had is how high are you going to be building? I was trying to look through the map. How is, how is the structure? What's the height of the building that you?
Yeah, I believe the building height is 40 feet.
40 feet, okay. So you're going to dig 30 feet, 40 feet? So are you saying you'll be only protruding from the surface 10 feet give or take?
That's right, because we are cutting down the grade about 10 feet from where it is today.
I mean, yeah, that's my only concern. That's why I would ask the town at least to give us some privacy, some barrier, create some buffer zone, a demarcation between the residential. I believe you said you have what, 110 feet from the building from where you proposed to build up to the property line?
That's, that's the narrowest point.
Yeah.
That's the narrowest point?
That's the narrowest point, correct. The average is, is about 145.
Perhaps before the next hearing, if you can, if you could see if you can come up with a rendering of what the view would be from that side. That way for anyone on that side, you have a better idea of what you might be looking. Because I mean, you're talking about changes in gray and it's sort of, you know, you're trying to put all that together in your head. You know, it'd be easier just to see a rendering and say, okay, if you're on that side looking at, towards the building, this is kind of what the view would be looking like, ground level, you know, kind of looking off towards the building. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then we'll have that to help you, I think.
That's perfect. Yeah, one last thing about traffic. So you, I, you know, I couldn't help but laugh when you were presenting your traffic statistics. I live down there. When it's, the traffic is bad, it backs up all the way to the bridge on Trail Road because of whatever activities happening on Old Main Street. So it's not like 12 feet or something like I saw you put up there. So I, I mean, it's definitely a concern because you see, Trail Road is one of those roads during the day, there's nobody, people, they are flying through. Comes rush hour, which is the evening and in the afternoon, you're backed up, you can't even get out of the house. So, so whatever you get to your data, I don't know, I don't think that's correct. So it's kind of, it's a bit misleading because, you know, we have kids down there and I do understand it's a mixed use place, but you have residential on one side and commercial on the other part. So, you know, adding more traffic will definitely be some congestion. Thank you.
Ms. Louden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In light of hearing all of the residents, oh, I'm sorry, ma'am, you speak first.
No, she can go.
Sure.
But I'm feeling we're going to, it might help answer one of the questions.
Okay.
But I still will, I still will let you go.
Okay.
Give me one second.
Thank you. So in light of hearing all of the residents' comments and continued concerns about the traffic impact in the area, I wonder if the board would be open to asking the applicant to allow a third party review of the traffic impact study that was submitted, just to kind of get a fresh set of eyes on it. The town engineer found it to be, you know, workable, but what we're hearing is, you know, maybe on the ground, that's not what's happening. And perhaps to get another perspective may help alleviate some of the traffic concerns.
See, this time you read my mind. Yeah, I think that, I think at this point, this bit.
I'm sorry.
I think at this point, it's two different, two meetings now worth of traffic questions. The residents are not going to be satisfied. I think if we don't do it this way, if we have the independent look and they concur with the numbers, at that point, you know, we'll make our decision, but you know, at that point, there should be at least, whether you agree with it or disagree with it, you, you can have a more warm and fuzzy feeling that someone else is agreeing with the numbers or not agreeing with them. That may be the case as well, in which case we'll have to figure out what we do next. But I don't, I don't know that we, anybody up here is going to feel comfortable then with this many comments about traffic if we don't at least look at it. All right? So you guys, it's up to you, but you know, I think it would be in your best interest as well to go that route, just so we can address what appears to be about 80 to 90% of the concern for the project overall. I think you could probably address some of the other, you know, whether it's the renderings or whatever to get people to understand the buffering and all that. But I don't think anybody's going to be comfortable with the traffic until we have a separate set of eyes tell us the same thing or something different. All right? Okay. Ma'am?
Hi, I'm Chrissy Connor. I live at 277 Foster Road and I'm speaking on behalf of my mom, Josie Connor, 220 Old Main Street. For those of you that haven't been down there, there's about five residential houses that are on Main, Old Main. So there's about five people that get heavily impacted by this. So I want to, you know, reiterate the traffic and safety report. I recently stayed with my mother for three months when she had her surgery and I grew up in that house and I could not understand how much traffic was going by. And I reviewed the traffic and safety report that was prepared by the candidate, the MDM Transportation Consultant, and they verified what I thought, you know, over 1,300 people go on Old Main Street per day. So that's, that's a dead end street. That's a lot of traffic. And the town of Tucksbury previously identified that part of town is the most heavily traversed and it's quite dangerous. In a 2015 study, they showed that that light from Walmart to where we're talking about, Old Main Street, the proximity is so close that by the time you see the red light, it's too hard to stop. So it's been identified previously. And we used to have two lanes going out and it would say, keep right to trip the lights. And then people would try to move over to the left and the light wouldn't go. And they did some adjustments, but now it's essentially one person can get out at a time. So that causes a significant backup. Now, we asked, you know, to see if the town could do anything about the lights and they came back and said, no, the lights are, are optimally working. So if they're optimally working, you know, then we have a problem. I almost called when I, in 2020, when I stayed there, to say, you know, this neighborhood has really been, you know, affected greatly by the heavy trucking that's already there to add on to it. 4:30 in the morning, I was going to call to say, can you truck at 4:30 in the morning? They do. They do. And then the baseball company down there, the Nor'easters, they have, you know, drop offs and just at one time, 35 cars parked there. So when I was young, they had one warehouse that serviced the train. Now we have four and we're proposing a fifth. Now we have four, and we're proposing a fifth. I think that's, we're at capacity. And I respectfully ask that the town manager go down there and look at the data carefully. And if he's already looked at the transportation report prepared by MDM, I'd like to just bring up the table, and I'd just like to summarize it for, you know, the people that weren't able to review it. So basically, they're saying that during the peak hours of seven AM to nine AM, they would only have one truck coming, one truck going. And they'd only have eleven employees coming and two exiting. That's the data that they provided to the town of Tewksbury. I think that is much too low for some company that has sixty-four parking spots. And then exiting, what they presented to the town of Tewksbury was, that they're going to have three people coming in their cars and ten people leaving, and only one truck coming and two trucks going. So they're saying that, you know, that's such a small proportion. In reality, do we really think there's only going to be one or two cars coming and trucks coming in rush hour? You know, if you can't truck twenty-four hours a day, I don't know the answer to that. Can you truck in the middle of the night? Can you truck by somebody's house at four-thirty in the morning, wake them up? Because that's what happened to me. It used to be such a nice residential area with, we respect the trucks, we only want what's safe for our children. Our, our community has grown. There's some young children. There's three newborn babies in the area. Erica has children, and, you know, they, that's their, that's their home, and trucks are going by all the time. And the narrowest part of the area is right where you, it's right as the Old Main Street ends and you go into the warehouses. That is so narrow, I do not see, I, I would urge all of you to go down there. I do not see how that two trucks can get by. So I would urge the engineer to get that third-party evaluation. I would also like him to go look at the site and see. I walked around counting cars because I couldn't believe the traffic. And there was a significant amount of traffic. And that was in the height of the pandemic. That was November 2020. So I know they adjusted their data up twenty percent or fifteen percent to account for the data. Also, on their report, they talked about the safety. They said there were no safety concerns, no accidents, yet we have people saying, even myself included, we almost got killed at that light. So if you look at their data, they did five years, and they averaged five years. If you factor out 2020 and 2021, you may have a safety concern because there was eleven accidents in 2017, then there was five and seven. So, you know, I would say, consider taking out the two quiet years and see if there's really an issue. And again, it was identified already in 2015 that that light is a safety concern. And I, and again, we respect the trucks, we live with the trucks, we live with the trains. We, we all want what's safe for our children, and I know you do too. So I appreciate you getting that third-party evaluation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with any questions?
Excuse me. I just want to say one thing, just to clarify everything.
You, you're still not at the microphone, though. You've got to be at the microphone.
Gail Stone, 46 Trail Road. This is a notice that I got saying that people-
I'm not doing the notices anymore. I, I completely-
People's names were not listed on the list that you mailed out. They did not get a copy because they-
I've already confirmed that the list of who should have gotten the notices went out from the town planner. So I'm not going to keep doing this at the hearing.
But they're not on this list, you understand? Old Main Street is not even listed on here.
Again, we, we will agree to disagree on this point then, because I've confirmed it where we send it out from, that these have gone out.
All right, but this is the list that they were supposed to send to the people.
I'm sorry, Ms. Lauter?
The abutters list is, the abutters list is certified by the assessor's office. I have that list. I know what list you're talking about because I received it too. That list is certified by the assessor's office. So, I mean, the way to contest that, I suppose, would be to file an appeal when the approval is made on grounds of defective procedure. But, I mean, that's the recourse at this point. The, the certified abutters list is certified by the town assessor. The applicant applies for it, receives it. And there are two different abutters lists, like we mentioned. The Conservation Commission has a smaller jurisdictional area as far as notices concerned. It's different from 40A. And just to play it out, I like to play the judge game when it comes to this kind of stuff. If people find their way to the public hearing, because it's in, you know, the newspaper, the agenda's posted, and notices go out, those three things happen to create the highest likelihood of someone making it their way to the hearing. And if someone does make their way to the hearing, but their argument is that they weren't noticed, a judge is going to throw that out as, as constructive notice because you found your way to the hearing. If any of your neighbors have questions, I mean, this hearing opened on June 27th. I'm happy to show them plans and discuss anything with them. I'm sure the applicants agree. But, you know, just kind of playing through what that means, it's certified through the assessor's office. That's not a part that we have. We get the list, that's who we mail it to. Just, just to give you the context of kind of where this all goes.
But you also have to understand that there's a, there's a circle that's basically put down from the property. So even though you might think you're close enough, you may not be within that circle. And that's why.
No, I know, because I went down there, and I wasn't in that circle. But I got a notice. And I said, why did I get a notice? Because I thought it was going to be on Clark Road until I ran around the corner.
Well, again, I don't know if we're talking about the one you signed for or not, so.
I don't know why I got the notice to start.
Okay. You gotta stay at the microphone. But this, this will be the, this will be the last time we discuss notice, though.
Okay.
During this proceeding. Okay?
Thanks. But at least I know.
It's duly noted that, that notice is something that has been discussed now at two hearings.
Right.
We will not discuss it any further.
Okay.
Okay.
Chrissy Connor.
You gotta, you gotta lift it up. There you go.
Chrissy Connor, 277 Foster Road. Does the, does this board need the approval of the community?
I'm sorry?
Does, does the board need the approval of the community for this permit to go through?
No, no. We, we have the permit granting authority for the town.
Okay, thank you.
But that's why we let, that's why we have the public hearing. So residents can come in and, you know, make their quick, ask questions, comments, concerns, whatever it is, before we make a decision. But I, I'm not sure what you'd be referring to. I don't, what do you, what that would be anyways.
No, I didn't know if there was a stipulation that the community, or the residents had to feel comfortable or approve the permit, so.
Yeah, no, there'd be no process for that. I don't know what that would, you'd have to, you're talking about like a vote at town. Like, you know what I mean? There's no pro- that's why we exist.
Okay.
To do that.
And then just respectfully to Gail Stone's point, usually sometimes the proceedings, they'll have, we'll have a, you know, process where the people are notified. And again, it's just, I won't bring it up, but I think you should look into that and the list of the abutters because she is the furthest one from this.
I respect your not bringing it up by bringing it up after I said we weren't going to discuss it anymore. So you slipped it in, I guess, so we discussed it one more time. But at this point, any, anything to do with a question about notice would have to be dealt with at the appeal phase because we are not going to discuss the notice question any longer in here. Because we've discussed it, we've explained the process, the process was followed. If someone has an issue with the process or an issue with the decision once it's rendered, if it's rendered, the appeal process is where that will be dealt with. So, but we've registered the comments on the concerns about notice at two hearings now. So we're well aware of it, but we will not discuss it any further. No, we have it slipped in yet again. So unless you have a comment on something other than notice or something notice-related, that will be the end of that.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. So other questions, comments, or concerns by anyone in the audience? Once, twice. So, all right, so bring it back to the board. Obviously, we have things to deal with. We'll deal with the traffic. We're gonna get that going. You still have things with the town engineer to work out, make sure the town engineer is satisfied with what you've sent, because until he tells us he is, we don't know. And beyond that, we'll, we'll set this for the next hearing and see where we are. Okay?
Thank you very much.
All right, so.
Motion to continue.
We have a motion to continue this to 7:10 on August 22nd.
Motion made.
Seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, it takes one minute before we start the next one?
How do we initiate if we want to?
I think actually, gentlemen, gentlemen, I think even though Mr. Fowler's taking a second, I think we can deal with the next issue while he's taking a moment because it's just a continuance.
Yeah.
So why don't we move on to Agenda Item G? This is 160 and 170 River Road. The applicant has requested to be continued to our 8:22 meeting. And we have them on for 7:00 PM. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made, seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, then we'll wait for Mr. Fowler to come back before we move on to the others.
Make it two minutes because I gotta run them there myself.
All right.
Okay. Jim Hanley, Civil Design Consultants here for 1023 and 1029 East Street. Just a kind of a quick recap to where we are, right? So 12-acre lot, frontage on East Street, about half the site is wetland. You guys approved this sometime in, I believe it was May of '21, so about eighteen months ago, give or take. We've been out there working really since maybe October of last year. And we're really in front of one item. So if you look at the handout that I just gave you, the first two sheets are off of that May approved plan. The first sheet shows you the layout of the entire parking area, the proposal, and what was approved. And then the second sheet, we highlighted the pervious pavement. So through discussions with the client at the time, his priority was to provide a maximum amount of parking for the business. He's building this site out. He wanted to make sure he had enough parking for the next twenty years as he built his business out. Since that time, the pricing associated with the construction of the pervious pavement has changed. So therefore, we got a call maybe ninety days ago or so to look and see if we can come up with an alternative to the pervious pavement. So if you go onto the third page of that, kind of shows the layout of the, of what we came up with. And the fourth page shows what is essentially a conventional infiltration basin. So what we're doing or asking for consideration tonight is to allow us to eliminate the pervious pavement and replace the, that BMP with a more conventional stormwater pond. So if you look at, kind of flipping back and forth here, but essentially, the, the modification exists, consists of removing the most northeasterly access drive. So you approved three, we're now down to two. We've also eliminated thirty-four parking spaces. So we had somewhere about 131. We're down to ninety-seven parking spaces. And we've removed the pervious pavement. We've made some minor modifications to site grading. They'd actually already poured the building slab, so we were kind of hemmed in as to what we could actually do here. But we, we get everything to grade essentially from the west side of the site, at the bottom of the paper, to a, we'll just call it a drainage swale located along the perimeter of the parking, fills up, and that discharges out until the infiltration basin. So in total, we have about thirty thousand square feet of less of impervious surface, thirty-four less parking spaces, one less access drive onto the site. Pervious pavement has been eliminated. Designed the basin to comply with the local state and local and state stormwater management regulations. No change to the building size or building location or building utilities. So we submitted this to you guys on June 24th, Conservation on June 29th. We're at the Conservation Hearing last week. We presented the project to them. Essentially, they asked us to come back when we have DPW approval. Got the DPW letter on Friday. We reviewed it Friday afternoon, Monday, tried to reach out to DPW, but there's vacation schedules that didn't allow us to, right? So we reviewed it. We feel comfortable that we can work through the items that are on the review letter. And I guess we're asking for consideration for the approval of the non-significant change.
So before I do the board, Ms. Lauter, any comments?
Nothing beyond what's in my letter, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, we'll start Mr. Fritalia.
Well, Mr. Hanley, I, I understand your, your concern and the expenses involved, but Ms. Lauter has brought up several points here as far as the snow storage. Have you seen this letter at all?
I have, yeah. Yeah, we got this up, yeah.
And, and the parking spaces. So what do you suggest of?
So the, the parking space is a little, is a little unique for this use, right? And if I'm speaking out of turn, feel free to correct me. But we had, we basically have somewhere about one parking space for every sixty square feet of building area for this use, right? So, you know, for a, for an office use, you'd have one for three hundred or something, right? So this is totally within your purview to be able to address, right? The 131 was the result on the original plan, was the result of maximizing this for the client's need. He's looked at everything and said, I can live without those additional parking spaces, but I can't put that pervious pavement in. So that's why we revise it like that. We do have a significant area which equals to about five thousand square feet per acre of impervious surface for snow storage. And like always, if we exceed that, we're responsible to take it off the site and keep, keep the traffic flow, you know, working.
I recall the, the applicant having a couple of businesses in there. Is that still accurate? Or just one business?
Yeah, no, just American gutter. That's the home of American gutter.
Was there a trucking business in there as well?
A trucking business?
Trucking, no.
I, I'm not aware of that, if, if it is.
Okay. So that's my concern is what Ms. Lauter brought up as far as the regulations and the bylaw requirement and all that. So I'll let my other colleagues comment on it as well. So thank you.
Mr. Fowler?
After reviewing this plan over the weekend, I'm pleased to see the, because of the sweeping, my thought before was this site was going to have permanent parking spaces used by trucks that were there every day. So how are they going to go around sweeping underneath them or over them without moving them all to one side and then sweeping the parking lot and then going in? And you have, if without, if you're not sweeping your pervious material, it's not, it's going to fail. And that bothered me. Now it doesn't bother me because now you're not going to have the problem of dirt going into pervious asphalt and it's swept off, you know, in a manner that you would normally do with a regular parking lot, not to be redundant. But so I'm happy with the drainage pits sites. And I'll set for her.
Okay. Well, one thing I didn't mention, Mr. Chairman, is that the pervious pavement, I don't know if you remember, but the site's located within what they call an AUL, so it has some level of contamination on-site, right? So we put a lot of work into trying to figure out how to meet the standards, even with the AUL present. What we've been able to do is eliminate any infiltration within that AUL and therefore any digging near the contaminated material now. So that was another factor, kind of, as, as we're going through this and looking at putting that pervious pavement in, excavating down to native material, all that kind of stuff. So now we get that infiltration basin completely beyond the limit of that contaminated stuff. So I think in that perspective, it's probably a better design, too. Mr. Duffy?
Yes, I was just curious, why remove the landscape buffer? Like, how does that fit into the, the scheme of things there?
Can you just point me in the right direction for that?
Let me see. Where I saw that. Where there is a requirement for a landscape buffer- Where there is a requirement for a landscape buffer when you have industrial across from a residential, an R-40 zone?
Yes. So you've got to bear with me, because I inherited this project in my office, right? But I believe the, what we did in lieu of that landscape buffer is we proposed an opaque fence that runs along the entire end wall, right? So a landscape wall and fence in lieu of that landscape buffer.
Oh, okay.
That's from the original plan.
Okay, okay, and I wasn't, by far, I wasn't on the board then, so, you know, so I'm just sort of playing a little catch-up here. I guess, and then I guess, I mean, if you could just answer for me on the engineer's notes, I mean, I understand that you need to add a couple of cleanouts to a sewer line and, you know, why all the new permits, though? Why a trench permit, sewer connection permit?
Yeah, so in, now it's like off-base here, let me know, but these are his general comments relative to construction that you'll see on every single one of his letters. So even though we, this is a non-significant change, he still just kind of recaps, right? So his first section where he talks about the six waivers, I'm not asking you to re-review any of those waivers, but he just recaps that, right? So he has a handful of comments here, one of which was to dig additional test pits, which we coordinated with DPW, we did that earlier today, and validated our assumptions. Okay, I guess I'm good.
All right, I don't have anything to add. I'm fine with this, I mean, not needing the parking, we don't need the impervious surface paving for the sake of paving, doesn't make a lot of sense to me, so. All right, so other than these two, there's nothing else, right? So we need to expressly approve the reduction for snow storage, and what is it now, the number of parking spaces?
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven, so we need to approve that, okay. All right, so the, what is the pleasure of the board on this?
Those there?
No, just administrative.
Administrative. Motion to approve the non-substantial change for 1023, 1029 East Street.
With the notation on the snow storage and the ninety-seven spaces specifically.
Right.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, keep having the one, to DPW comments.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, and addressing the remainder of the DPW comments, like Mr. Hanley mentioned, the town engineer's on vacation through Thursday, so he'll address them early starting Friday.
Okay, so there's your motion. We've got a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Great, thank you very much, have a good night.
Good night, Jim.
All right, that moves us to old business, any old business anyone wishes to discuss? Any new business anyone wishes to discuss? No, and we have no correspondence this evening, so that brings us to a motion to adjourn. The motion being seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Good evening, and we'll see you in August.